All right, Commissioner Warburg, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome the public here and note that the public may comment on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the Commission and may be referred to staff. Comments will be accepted in person or via Zoom. To speak on an agenda item in person, please complete a speaker card, one of these green cards, and give it to the Secretary before the meeting or at latest prior to the time of the public comment for that item. When joining via Zoom, please use Raise Your Hand feature or press *9 on your phone to request to speak. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Feinstein?
Yes, there's a couple of changes I do want to talk about. So as you know, as you probably noticed, as you read your packet, we are continuing Item D tonight. That's the master planned unit development permit for Planning Area 5 of the train station specific plan. That was actually already noted in your agenda, but we're actually going to recommend continuation of a second item. It's Item B, the industrial project on your agenda, Fairfield Logistics Center. The city received a comment letter from a state agency on the environmental review, and we want to spend some time to make sure that we've addressed those comments, and we'd bring that back to you because we're not sure exactly how long it's going to take to go through that process. We'll continue that tonight, and we're going to re-notice that, so we'll put out a fresh public hearing notice with the date for that, so we'll just continue it without setting a date for that. The other item I want to note is that last week after we put out public hearing notices for this meeting, the City Council authorized comments to be provided by Zoom, and so we've made that change to your agenda, and anybody who is watching the meeting via Zoom tonight, as was noted with the Raise Your Hand or pressing 9 on your phone, you can comment that way. So that was a change to our agenda. With that, everything else will be the same, so we'll have two regularly scheduled items to talk about tonight.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as modified?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as modified.
And a second?
I second that.
Sorry, I second that.
All in favor, please indicate by the uplifted hand. Voting unanimous. The next item is approval of the minutes for August 25, 2021, Planning Commission meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please indicate by uplifted hand. Again, voting unanimous. Next item is approval of the minutes for September 8, 2021. Are there any changes to those minutes? If not, may I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the September 8, 2021 meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please so indicate. Voting unanimous. Okay, the next, this is the time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Commission. Items from the public that are not part of the agenda will be taken under consideration without discussion or action by the Commission except as authorized by law and may be referred to staff. I now open the public comment period. I don't see any speaker cards for this section. Do you have any via Zoom or otherwise?
At this time, we do not.
For them to let us know.
I've got a quick question. Is this regard, we're going to be speaking on the Green Valley 3 apartment?
Very soon.
All right, so I'll get a green card.
Yes, if you want to speak on the Green Valley, please fill out a green card and bring it up to the front.
Yeah, and I have not heard yet from our technical team if we have any remote Zoom speakers, one last chance for them to let us know if there are.
Can you hear me out there?
If not, it sounds like we don't have any.
No, we do not.
Okay. I now close the public hearing portion of this meeting. What follows next are scheduled matters. For each agendized item, there will be a presentation by city staff. For items involving applicant requests, I will ask the applicant to address the Planning Commission if they so desire. After that, I will open the public hearing and call out the names of members of the public who have filled out speaker cards to come forward to the podium and speak for up to three minutes. I will close the public hearing after all comments have been provided and after all of our questions regarding testimony during the public hearing have been answered. After the public hearing is closed, the Planning Commission will then deliberate on items and may have additional questions of staff. We cannot take additional testimony or questions from the public after the hearing is closed. The Commission will then vote on the item. Mr. Feinstein, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so our next item is what we call a planned development zone initiation for the proposed Green Valley 3 apartment project. So tonight, you're going to be essentially doing one thing, you know, you're asked to do one thing, and that's to initiate what we call a planned development zoning action for the project. And I'll walk you through a little bit as we go through the presentation, what a planned development zone is, what it does, and how it relates to the proposed project. But what I want to be clear to you tonight is that all you're doing is initiating this, you're not taking any action on the project, you're not being asked to approve the project, you're not being asked to look at any specific details about any of the impacts of the project. All you're doing is essentially kicking it off, and we don't normally do that, but I'll walk through a little bit tonight about why you're asked to do that because there's some aspects of this project that are a little bit different than other projects. So what is the project? The project is an apartment project that's proposed, and I'll show you the site in just a moment. 268 units as a part of that project on a 5.7 acre parcel. And so this is a fairly dense project, apartment project compared to most, in fact, any project that you've seen in the city. It's a little over 46 units per acre, and that's a key factor in some of the actions or in some of the information that's going to be presented to you tonight and the request for the planned development zoning. The purpose of asking for the planned development zoning really is to allow for this project to be built in a more efficient way, to use that project site more efficiently in order to achieve the 268 units. What the action would do would be to create a special zone. So essentially, the project, every project here in the city, every piece of property in the city has a zoning district applied to it. It could be a residential zone, an industrial zone, a commercial zone, and each of those zones has special regulations that apply within that zone. So any property that has a high-density residential zone has certain development regulations that go along with it. What a planned development zone is, is a set of special regulations that are applied on top of the basic regulations that are in place, and in this case, the development is asking in particular for a greater amount of density than any of our residential zones allows, and we'll walk through that in just a minute about how that would work. But in this case, more than 46 units per acre, the densest residential zone that we could possibly apply to this site currently without any special regulations allows up to 32 units per acre. They're asking for a little more than 46 units. We typically look for round numbers like 48, so what's being proposed before you tonight is to give a little bit of flexibility, is to allow up to 48 units per acre. That would be 16 more units per acre than the underlying highest-density zone that we could apply to this site. So it is a, you know, 16 extra units, you know, they're looking for a little more than 14, but the action, just for flexibilities we move through this project, would allow for up to 16 extra units per acre to be built on this site. The proposal that they're putting forth in our highest-density zone allows a building of 45 feet tall. Theirs is 48 feet tall, so allow that extra three-plus feet to their property. And in order to build at this more efficient, higher-density project compared to what would be allowed under the base zoning, they're looking for ground floor units within the apartment. The project needs to allow less private open space, like a courtyard, every unit would have a courtyard under our current code, requires an 80-square-foot private space. Upper-floor units are 48 square feet is what's required, so a balcony of 48 square feet. To be more efficient in the use here rather than the 80-square-feet, the special zone would allow for just 48 feet on the ground floor rather than 80, so the same as all the upper floors. So not a whole lot in the way of the total number of changes, but you can weigh whether or not, you know, how significant any of those changes are, but it is a substantially increase in the amount of density that would be allowed. And the way we do that is with a planned development zoning, which is that overlay on top of the base zoning, and I'll walk a little bit more through that. So where are we talking about? Where's the location? So the project that's being proposed is located within what the city refers to as the Green Valley Corporate Park, and so you'll see that on the screen up here. And for context, we have Sassoon Valley Road right here, Interstate 80, Green Valley Road. At the back, we have Mangels Boulevard and Business Center Drive running through the center of it. And so you'll see a collection of buildings along through here and a lot of vacant properties. This area was originally planned by the city back in the late 90s, and we, the city envisioned this as what we think of as a premier business park, an office park with, you know, what we call Class A office space, you know, some of the most expensive rents, multi-story office buildings, things like that, essentially an office park. So that was back in the late 1990s, and since that time, there have been some offices that have been built, these two here, this one right here, and these two buildings right here. But at the same time, we have some other uses. We have some one-story little industrial buildings that are, you can buy each one of them individually, they've got roll-up doors. We've got an assisted living facility. We've got the North Bay offices, which are, you know, also Class A office. So we have some uses, you know, particularly these two here, that aren't necessarily what were originally envisioned in this area. We also have two hotels right here. And one of the reasons we've got some uses out there that weren't what were originally envisioned is that the market for Class A office space is very different today, and it's been very different for a number of years since the late 1990s when we originally envisioned this. The market for Class A office space really almost does not exist out in this part of the Bay Area anymore. You know, at first, you know, with the internet changing things, that people at home offices, that reduced some of the office demand, and now in a post-pandemic world where even in downtown San Francisco, large companies are abandoning their offices, the market for this kind of an office out in this area really isn't what was envisioned 20 years ago. So we've had some businesses that have already built that aren't, that don't fit that model, but we've also entitled other buildings out here that are not Class A office space, particularly in the last couple of years. Right here, we've entitled a Residence Inn Hotel. We've, the Planning Commission, I'm going to say it was maybe not quite two years ago, approved three industrial warehouse buildings, two of which, lost my mouse, there we go, two of which are right here, the third one is over here. And then the Planning Commission and City Council also approved an apartment project with more than 300 units of apartments over at this part of the office park that are built, being built right now. If you go out there, you'll see them under construction, being built by the applicant for tonight's project. So they're essentially looking to build another apartment project out here. That's the context, so the site that we're looking at is over here behind the Residence Inn. And so that 5.7 acre site is at the back of the Residence Inn location. It's proposed to share access with the existing offices right here as well as the access for the Residence Inn, so they would all sort of function off of this main driveway. There's another driveway over here for the hotel that they're asking to take access off of as well. So it's located at the back of some existing or planned, I should say, or under construction development here. We have Green Valley Creek right here, some of the creek corridor, and you can't see, maybe you can see a little bit of the shadowing here under the west side of the site. That's a part of the creek corridor, those native oak trees, as we'll see in a moment, they're not proposing to develop that, they're proposing to keep the development over here on this part of the site. The other key item for context here is this residential neighborhood. It's the Sienna Neighborhood, and there's, I think it's about 150, maybe 148 houses in this neighborhood here. So they're single-family, primarily built around little courtyard driveways, so a fairly dense residential neighborhood right to the back. And so you'll see already, we've got some of these office buildings that are, you know, back up in the general vicinity, and we'll see similar form of development over here if this project is ultimately approved. And again, tonight, all we're doing is kicking off the project. So what is proposed by the applicant is a four-story apartment building, and although it looks like it snakes around in various forms like this, it's really one building with lots of angles, indentations here so that it doesn't look like one mass building, but rather it has a lot of movement, but it's a four-story apartment building. The nearest portion of this unit is 59 feet from the property line over here, so it's set back from that property line. Other parts are set back farther from the neighbors back here. And what's unique about this project, and we'll talk a little bit more about this as I get through my presentation, is that the apartment portion of the project is surrounding a five-level parking garage, entirely within the height of the main four-story apartments, but it does encompass five stories of parking, and that's not something we've ever seen here in the city with a residential project, to have that decked parking. Bless you. And here, stepping back a little bit, we see that same site plan there. This is what, from the backside, that proposed apartment project would look like. Okay, so let's talk about the planned development zoning request. So as I mentioned, this is a business park, and so our general plan today gives it a designation of IBP, or what we call industrial business park. So the first thing that would occur as a part of this, because business park does not allow housing, and this is similar to what was done on the other apartment project that's under construction at the other end of the park, you'd need to change the general plan designations. You'd need to relook at the vision for this part of the park. In order to allow a residential project with the density that they're requesting, we would need to give it what we call a mixed-use general plan designation. This is background and context, this won't necessarily be a part of your action tonight, but this is more to help you understand sort of the steps that this project would go through as a part of the entitlement. So it does require a general plan amendment. We would propose that it be redesigned to mixed-use, and one or more of the parcels here that are adjacent, the hotel parcel, this parcel, and probably the offices over here that all share the access, would all be included in a mixed-use general plan designation, and as a part of that, the general plan, we have a number of mixed-use areas, and it lays out a set of specific uses that are allowed in that mixed-use area. So in this case, it would be office, hotel, and residential up to, you know, 48 units per acre is how that would be described. Then, as a part of that, zoning would need to be changed. Right now, it has an IBP zoning, which again does not allow for residential. The residential very-high-density zone, which is the highest-density zone, is what we would apply. The basic allowance in that is 32 units per acre. Because if the general plan is amended to mixed-use, in order to facilitate this project, it would authorize up to a certain number above that, something greater than this 32, that's where the planned development overlay kicks in. We wouldn't just utilize the underlying regulations of the very-high-density zone, there would be on top of that overlaid, would be a second zoning district, which would be this special planned development zone. And so tonight, you're being asked to initiate that. The city code, if, in order to craft these special regulations, the city code essentially says a couple of things. It says either the Planning Commission or the City Council must, quote-unquote, "initiate" this action. Essentially, it's giving the thumbs up for the project to begin. As I mentioned, it doesn't entitle it, but what it does is it allows the city to study the project, both the architecture, does it meet all the other zoning code regulations, the environmental review. So by doing this, it allows the city to begin studying all the environmental impacts of the project, and we anticipate that an environmental impact report, which is sort of the highest level of environmental analysis, that we anticipate that an environmental impact report would be prepared if this project is initiated. So it authorizes the study to begin. It also authorizes the city to prepare the special regulations, and there aren't that many that would need to be prepared, but to prepare the special regulations for the Planning Commission to consider. So that's essentially the path. All three of those would be considered as part of one set of actions. If you initiate the project, we'd come back at a later date, my guess is it's somewhere later in 2022, six, nine months from now, we'd be back in front of the Planning Commission having completed the studies, provided those to you, provided those to the public for their review and comment, completed all the environmental analysis, and then we'd come back for your consideration to act on the project and to entitle it. But again, the city code requires that that starting point to be tonight's action to initiate this. The City Council also could do it if the Planning Commission doesn't, either the code allows for either. Okay, as the city, as the Planning Commission considers this action, the city code lays out a collection of these bullets up here that talk about what's the purpose of PD zoning, this planned development overlay zone, why do you use it? So there's four main concepts. One is to promote creative and imaginative designs, and one of the things that's imaginative for this one, more creative, this would be the only project in the entire city, as I mentioned, that utilizes that decked parking, and particularly five stories. It's, you know, way beyond anything else that we've ever seen here in the city for a residential project. I think the County Government Center downtown, you know, where you have a lot of customers coming into the County Government Center, that has a multi-story parking deck. We've got a smaller parking deck for our, for our, at our Transportation Center over on Beck Avenue, but nothing like this for a residential project. So that's fairly unique, or it is unique for a residential project. The other purpose is to help foster integrated development. Instead of having individual pieces of property that develop together to push for development that shares utilities, shares driveways, things like that, and as I mentioned, this all would function with the hotel and the offices next door as one integrated project. And then here's probably the big one, it shows up in the city code as really the third item it lists, but with this one, to promote more efficient use of land. Normally, in order to build 268 units of housing, the way it's typically done is you've got big fields of parking. One story, you know, it's not a deck, you have lots of asphalt, a much bigger site to accommodate all that spread-out parking. In this case, they're looking to avoid all that asphalt and put it all into that parking deck, so it's clearly a more efficient use of land in order to get 268 units on this site. The other purpose is to safeguard the environment, and as I mentioned, we'll be certainly looking at all the environmental impacts, doing an environmental, full environmental impact report, but also, as I noted, you've got the creek corridor and the trees as a part of that, their site plan avoids all of that, so they are working to safeguard the environment in that regard. So the Planning Commission should consider these purposes as this project intends to implement. The other thing for your consideration, the city code requires you to be presented with information on what are the alternatives? If the Planning Commission or the City Council choose not to initiate the planned development zone, are there other ways that the applicant could achieve their objectives? And if we start with the idea that one of their objectives is to build 268 units, and I should mention, under the RVH zone at that 32 units, that would be 185 units, though if their objective is to build those extra units, there are two alternatives that can help them achieve everything that's needed to do that. There's a third alternative that can address some of the height issues, but that doesn't get to some of the density issues. So really, we want to focus on two alternatives that are available to the applicant if they wish to do 268 units without the initiation of the planned development zoning. The first is that they could request a density bonus. Under the city code as well as the state law, and there's a lot of interrelationships between our city code and state law regarding a density bonus, and essentially the way a density bonus would work is that the applicant would reserve for a length of time, it's many, many decades, certain number of the units in the project, a certain percentage of the units for lower incomes, and your staff report- but with this one, to promote more efficient use of land. Normally, in order to build 268 units of housing, the way it's typically done is you've got big fields of parking. One story, it's not a deck. You have lots of asphalt. A much bigger site to accommodate all that spread-out parking. In this case, they're looking to avoid all that asphalt and put it all into that parking deck. So it's clearly a more efficient use of land in order to get 268 units on this site. The other purpose is to safeguard the environment. And as I mentioned, we'll be certainly looking at all the environmental impacts, doing an environmental, full environmental impact report. But also, as I noted, you've got the creek corridor and the trees as a part of that. Their site plan avoids all of that. So they are working to safeguard the environment in that regard. So the Planning Commission should consider these purposes as this project intends to implement. The other thing for your consideration, the city code requires you to be presented with information on what are the alternatives? If the Planning Commission or the City Council choose not to initiate the Plan Development Zone, are there other ways that the applicant could achieve their objectives? And if we start with the idea that one of their objectives is to build 268 units, and I should mention, under the RVH zone at that 32 units, that would be 185 units. So if their objective is to build those extra units, there are two alternatives that can help them achieve everything that's needed to do that. There's a third alternative that can address some of the height issues, but that doesn't get to some of the density issues. So really, we want to focus on two alternatives that are available to the applicant if they wish to do 268 units without the initiation of the Plan Development zoning. The first is that they could request a density bonus. Under the city code, as well as state law, and there's a lot of interrelationships between our city code and state law regarding a density bonus. And essentially, the way a density bonus would work is that the applicant would reserve for a length of time, it's many, many decades, certain number of the units in the project, a certain percentage of the units for lower incomes. And your staff report includes information on, depending on what those income levels are, what percentage of the units would have to be reserved for decades at a time for those lower-income residents. If they do meet the state law's requirements for what percentage of these units are set aside for affordable, permanently, essentially affordable, units, they can get a density that allows the 268 units. So their one option is to seek that out. And at the same time, if they do provide that level of affordability, state law and the city's code allow us as well to give them some other flexibility on code to allow for the reduced... As indicated through this request, that that's not what they're looking to do. But we are obligated to tell you that that's an alternative. The second alternative is, as you all know, the city is in the process of updating our general plan. And one of the things that's become very clear through comments we've received from various people and the City Council is that this city is becoming a more urban place than our last general plan had envisioned it to be. And as a part of becoming a more urban place, more urban means more dense. And so staff fully expects that as a part of the general plan update, we will be proposing general plan designations and zoning designations to implement those general plan designations to allow a higher density than our RVH currently allows, which is 32. I would expect that at a minimum, 48 units is going to be one of the general plan designations that would be created and would be available. It's not available today, but as that alternative would be to wait for the general plan to be completed. And they could specifically ask to make sure that this site is considered for that. It's not a guarantee, but it is definitely an alternative path that can be considered for this. The applicant has put this, the request, in now. They want to get going on this today, is what they've told us. They don't want to wait for the general plan update. So they are looking for the Planning Commission to initiate this to happen through the PD overlay process. So with that, I will conclude my presentation. And before I provide my recommendation here, I should note, we did receive four emails over the last day. Those were printed out and provided to you. We will be holding a public hearing when I'm done. The code, the city code requires that prior to consideration of the initiation, that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing on this. And we've seen certain folks already provide their speaker cards. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Staff recommends that you approve Resolution 2021-19, initiating the Plan Development zoning. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Feinstein. Questions from the commissioners?
Hi, good evening. I'd like to first say that I was contacted by the applicant just to make sure that I didn't have any questions about the project and whatnot. My question is, if the applicant already has a 300-unit property in that same vicinity, why are we being asked to initiate and essentially rezone for this particular project when that project, if I'm understanding correctly, is 300 units, which is more?
Yeah, some of that's a question for the applicant. The applicant certainly has the right to ask for this. They, I don't want to put words in their mouth. You may want to have them come up and answer specifically what's drawn them to put in this application. But what I will say is, I think it's pretty clear anyone who reads the newspaper, listens to the news, is aware that the state is in a severe housing crisis. It's pretty clear, at least statewide, that we do not have enough housing in this state. I think we're all aware of what housing prices are here locally. A lot of that's a supply and demand question. Do we have enough supply to keep housing prices at affordable levels? And for anyone who thinks our housing is not at an affordable level today, that means we don't have enough housing. So as a housing project, the clear purpose of this request is to add to the housing supply. The applicant may have some more information for you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there any reason why this particular site is kind of, it seems a little odd for that kind of density? I mean, if I were to pick any place in Fairfield, that would probably be one of the last places that I would choose personally. I think it seems reasonable. I just wanted to find out if there's, you know, the rationale. Because it sounds like this is a pretty big developer, and maybe they have other sites. And I think it seems like the concern is that that's just going to be a slippery slope after this 300 complex, and that that whole area is going to be kind of primed for apartments. And I mean, I'm not sure that's the plan, but it seems reasonable to believe that that could happen. And I know there's some concerns there.
Sure. Yeah, so it becomes a question when you look at the density. Is it the height? Is it the mass of the buildings? Is it the amount of traffic being generated? Yeah, so the question of appropriateness of density has a lot of factors associated with it. So if it's a question of height or mass, you can think you have the office buildings essentially right there. And right now, you could build an office building or the large warehouse buildings. Those are 200,000 square feet. So from a massing and density, the kinds of buildings that you're seeing built out there already are of that mass and density. From a height standpoint, from a height standpoint...
Sorry, I know there's a lot of emotion about this, and we respect and we welcome your comments. And there will be a lot of time to express that. So let's just try to keep it a little quiet so we can continue the discussion.
From a height standpoint, if that's a factor, under the existing zoning for this site, you can build buildings by right up to 50 feet. So you can get buildings that tall. Office buildings or other buildings in this zoning district can be located as close as 25 feet to the nearest house, if you look at our zoning regulations. So there's a lot of different angles there to look at, from the massing, the building height, the size of the buildings. It's not that this building is necessarily much different than that. In terms of traffic, traffic is always a concern with this. Office buildings, if you look at our general plan, our general plan assumes at least 60 jobs per acre. So if you look at 60 jobs, almost six acres, that's 360 jobs. 360 people is the basic assumption in our general plan for how many people are coming and going multiple trips per day. So if it's a question just in a vacuum of, is this the right location for that? At this point, we haven't begun studying it. The action tonight allows us to begin studying that. But some of the basic factors suggest that it isn't necessarily black and white, that this isn't appropriate. But we haven't, first of all, we haven't studied it. But you have to take into account some of those other factors to say it's not that you're going to necessarily get one-story, low-density development here. This site is expected to be job intense, or traffic intense, I should say, tall buildings, much more massive buildings. So from a character standpoint, that really is what's expected out in this location. So ultimately, be for the Planning Commissioner, City Council, to consider those items at the time of action on the project. But at the early stages, staff is simply bringing this item to you to consider. Those are factors to think about in terms of appropriateness here.
I have a question about the density bonus. And you said that if they reserve a set-aside portion of affordable housing, the developer doesn't want that. But if we decide down the road that we are going to go this way, right now, we're just kicking off the study of it, can we mandate that there's a set-aside for affordable housing?
The only way you could mandate it is if you don't have the plan... The Plan Development Overlay Zone gets around the mandate. The only way to mandate it is if there's no Plan Development Zone and they still insist on wanting that number of units.
Mr. Feinstein, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or later for the developer or further down the line, if it gets to that point. But I'm curious to know, with this type of project coming for Commissioner Childs about housing affordability, is this project expected to bring affordable housing to the city of Fairfield? Or is this something that's going to attract residents outside of our city, and then our residents of Fairfield still don't have affordable housing?
So some of that's a question for the applicant. As proposed, it would be a market rate project. They're not, they haven't told us they intend to put any special affordability aspects. Now, apartments in general tend to be less expensive than a comparable-sized, single-family home. So in that regard, as an option for housing on a per-square-foot basis, yeah, it would be more affordable than a single-family house. But it would be, as proposed, its market rate without any restrictions on what the rents are.
So I think, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it because, of course, there's a lot of things that, if this went through, there's different iterations of different things that could happen. We have the general plan coming up, which, for any of us that have looked at the alternatives, there's a lot of material and there's a lot to digest as far as the different alternatives and sort of the vision there. If, I think my concern is just, without having the general plan solidified, I feel like there could be a slippery slope aspect to moving forward with this. And I feel I have major concerns about it for different reasons. But I think that if we table this until the general plan was solidified, it seems like there would be a more cohesive plan that the community could look at and assess everything as, you know, that whole park and say, this is what the plan is from the city and say, you know, maybe it's industrial and warehouses and whatnot, and potentially housing of some sort. But I feel like it would be better to have that entire plan from the city. I feel like that would be a stronger, a stronger recommendation.
And one thing, before we continue, do make sure that, as you're speaking, that your green light is on your microphone. Yeah, I didn't hear a question there. There'll be time for deliberations and discussion after the public hearing. But if there's questions, any further questions, happy to take them.
So I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Feinstein. Compare and contrast, what I think I heard you say is, if it were developed as an office project for which the owner of the land has the absolute right to do, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that, it wouldn't even, unless there were other reasons come before the Planning Commission in that case. So if it were developed as an office project, there would be plus or minus 360, 400 cars for that use. Is that correct?
Yeah, if it were a fully occupied office, that's what the general plan would assume, yes.
And in this case, the request is plus or minus 500 cars. Is that about right?
I think that's what the applicant has proposed, yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then with respect to the traffic flow, there's a lot of concern about that intersection. I think it would also be helpful to, and maybe you could put the overlay picture, to understand long-term, and granted, this is out of some of the city control, as to what's going to happen with Nitzel Road and the eventual connection to I-80, and what impact that may have on the congestion with Green Valley and Business Center Drive.
Yeah, and sitting here today at the very initial part of this project, and I'm not a traffic engineer, I can't tell you exactly what the long-term plans are for the road system out there, what the impacts of this project would be, how it might compare to the office, to the underlying zoning. All of those things would be studied and brought back to you if this project comes before you for consideration. And the environmental impact report, traffic analysis, all of that would be incorporated. I don't know if any of you, Commissioner Matthews, you may have been on the commission when the environmental impact report was brought for the other apartment project. But that document will include all of that detail to help understand those issues.
But as I understand it, and having recently been at a presentation about the 680-80 interchange, Nitzel Road will eventually become westbound access to 80.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I don't want to speak too definitively.
Well, the reason why I bring it up is traffic, being a resident of this area is an enormous problem. And this looks like a right-in, right-out situation that's just going to create a tremendous amount of pressure on that. I did want to also draw out a couple of other points. The height, we previously approved 50 feet for the warehouses, correct? At least the one next to Partnership?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly how tall they are.
I'm pretty sure that is.
They're tall. I don't know if they're as full as 50 feet, but they're definitely tall.
In my mind, the height is the least of the concerns here. But remind us as to the zoning for the Residence Inn.
The Residence Inn has the IBP zone, so it's a conditionally permitted use within that zoning district. Yeah, any of the uses that you see out there that are approved are allowed by the underlying zoning. All of the parcels within the park, currently with the exception of the apartment, and I should have mentioned, there's a fire station going in right here. With the exception of this, everything else in this park has that IBP, that business park zoning. So if one of these uses is here, it is allowable in some form under that existing zoning. The hotels required a use permit. They weren't what was originally envisioned for this area, but they are currently allowable.
And directly across from this site, adjacent to existing hotels, that land is not developable. Is that correct?
This area right here?
Yes.
So there are some extensive wetlands in this area, and I believe it's been set aside as a, essentially as a conservation area, yes. So you won't see development over and through here. There is a little piece right there, but the rest of it, no.
Okay, that concludes my questions. Are there other questions by the commissioners? Do you want to have the applicant speak or just move into the public comment period? Any questions for the applicants?
I'd like to hear the applicant speak.
Okay. Mr. Rule or others, would you like to come forward? And reminding any in the public that would like to speak, please fill out the green cards and pass them forward. Right up here.
Sure.
Yes.
Enter Matthews, if you could open the public hearing.
Is this part of the public hearing?
This would be part of the public hearing.
Okay, I now open the public hearing.
And before you begin, if the green light is not showing, push the button and it'll light up.
Which button here? Is it which button?
There should be a long, flat button. Oh, there's no green button, I'm sorry.
It's a hot mic.
I apologize.
Be careful.
I've never used that. I assumed it was the same as mine, I apologize.
I don't have anything formal, you know, prepared to present. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. I know that there were a few that popped up. You know, we think it's a really terrific area for housing, for somebody to live. I think everybody here can attest to that. Not everybody, whether it's your nurses, your firefighters, police officers, can afford a $700,000 home in the Green Valley area. Not to mention, the state is in a huge deficit. The city is not separate from that. You know, the city needs housing. We build a terrific multifamily luxury apartment product. And we'd like to continue contributing that to the city. We think that, you know, it presents, the density presents a unique opportunity. I know that one of the main goals of the general plan update and the current general plan is to focus on a better, more efficient use of land, of vacant land. 5.7 acres, you know, to be able to build a really nice apartment project on 5.7 acres that gets you 268 units was previously pretty much unheard of. And like Dave said, Mr. Feinstein said, has never really been done in the city of Fairfield. So we think that as the general plan update comes, this project could really set the... bar for what to expect and really what the goals are in terms of focusing on higher-density housing, building more housing, trying to close down that deficit, and also just making better, more efficient use of vacant land, like I said. No more suburban sprawl. You know, that's, that's going to turn the beautiful rolling hills of Fairfield into a concrete jungle, but using, making use of, you know, 5.7 acres for 268 units. I think that that's the direction that, you know, the city is, is aiming to go, and, and we really think that this could kick things off and set the bar for that. So as, as Mr. Feinstein also said, when it comes to, I know, we know, we studied traffic extensively with our previous apartment project, we know it's a major concern. We're going to do the same thing. We're going to have traffic engineers look at it. It's going to be a major section of, of an environmental review. And so we aim to do that again. We don't have all the, all the data or the numbers, you know, tonight, but we, but we certainly will. Any other questions?
So maybe before we start diving into questions, Mr. Rule, why don't you give a quick overview of Spanos Corporation, your other developments in the area and elsewhere?
Yes, so AG Spanos Companies, we were founded in 1960. We've been building apartments for 60 years, just over. It was founded by my grandfather, actually, Alex Spanos. We've built over 100,000 apartment units throughout the country over those 60, 60 years. And we've spent a lot of time, we're headquartered in Stockton, California. We've spent a lot of time up and down the 80 corridor. It's an area we're very familiar with. We've built several projects in Fairfield, including Verdant, which is just a little bit further down the street, and the one that we're constructing right now. And, you know, we, we love Fairfield.
Question, is there, do you have a, you said you guys have built 100,000 units. How many units are you, do you have kind of tentatively planned for Fairfield? And do you have any, I mean, is there some information you can give us on kind of what, you know, what neighborhoods and maybe what kind of units you're looking at as possibilities?
The, our plan for Fairfield, I mean, goes as far as, as this project here tonight. You know, it's, it's not necessarily like a, a long-term plan that we have where we're looking at a map of the city and trying to, trying to sort of pick and choose what our future route is, but we, we see opportunities as they arise. You know, a large reason for the general plan update is because there's not a lot of available zoned housing left. You know, a lot of the city of Fairfield is industrial, is commercial, office. And so, you know, we hope more opportunities will arise in the future, but we saw this one as, as a, as a good opportunity so far. So nothing further beyond, beyond this to answer your question for now.
The 300 units that's in, under construction now and then this?
280, 280.
280.
281, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that's under construction, as you know. I don't know if you've driven by, but should be done next year, middle of next year.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Rule, would you speak briefly to your vision as it relates to, you know, pedestrian-friendly, bike, cycling-friendly, other aspects to the development as you might see it?
Yes, so all of our projects are designed with, with pedestrian-friendly, cyclist-friendly, you know, in, in mind. Our current project right now that we're building, we have what we call bike cafes in every single building. So it's not, in addition to bike storage, you have your own little workbench to perform standard bike maintenance on your, on your bike for anybody to stop by. We have connectivity throughout the site and then throughout the surrounding community. And that, that's what this one would, would propose as well and work into the, into the site. Pedestrian-friendly as well. We have a, you know, a little dog park planned at the southern end of our, of our project that connects to the, the parking garage. And we also have the same, the same kind of thing at the current project that we're building right now. So we take, you know, pedestrian-friendly, cyclist-friendly things very seriously. And I mean, they're becoming not just a nice-to-have anymore, they're a must-have in terms of cycling, certainly.
Any other questions? Please.
So I'm hearing earlier that the parking garage will hold something like 500 and something cars, but that doesn't really account for how many bedrooms the units are. So how many bedrooms are we talking? Are there one and two, or two and three?
Yes, great question. So out of the 268 units, it would be about 50% studios and ones, 50% twos and threes. But when I say that, there's probably only about 15 three-bedroom units that would be planned. The rest of that 50% would be two-bedrooms. So I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but...
Actually, they're on this schedule here, and it looks like there are 19 three-bedrooms.
Okay, 19.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews.
Speaking of that, in your current project, you had originally planned three-bedrooms, but they were eliminated.
That's correct.
And as I understand, part of the concern was impact of additional elementary-age school children, is that correct?
That's correct. When we were doing our community outreach several years ago at the start of that project, you know, a lot of the feedback, and I'm sure, you know, we'll hear, we'll hear it tonight, it's a very legitimate concern. And we spent time speaking with the school district and, and school officials, but we heard early on that the schools were impacted, that that was a major concern from parents and, and community members. So what we did was we eliminated the three-bedrooms that we had planned at, at Green Valley 2, so as to reduce the number of school-aged children that would, that would come to live there. So we did speak with the school district. We were given numbers, and granted, this was 2019, so kind of the lost year, last year in between, I don't have data from 2020, but we were given, and I don't have them offhand, the numbers of children from K all the way through 8 at Neldamundi. They all, and we were told directly from the school district, they all had capacity. And actually Sheila McCabe from the school district was put on record saying that they were under at, at some of the local schools, like Green Valley Middle School as well. They were 50 students under at the time. I don't know what's, if, if, if anything has changed in the last year and a half or so. So there was that. We also received data from the school district at the previous project that we built, Verdant, down the street, which was 286 units. We built it about five years ago, six years ago. Out of 286 units, and I think 18 three-bedrooms, there were 24 school-aged children, K all the way through 12. So we found that, I mean, based on the way that the general plan would normally project students, I think the way that they would do it is Verdant would have been predicted to produce like 80 school-aged children out of 286 units. So 24 we found to be very favorable with no two-bedroom units and fewer, or sorry, three-bedroom units and fewer two-bedroom units at Green Valley 2. We, we figured it would be far less than, than 24. And then when we were proposing this project, we just felt like, you know, it is a, a great family-friendly area with no three-bedrooms at Green Valley 2. And with that data to sort of support a pretty low average or amount of school-aged children, we decided to include some three-bedrooms in this project. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, please.
I just have a couple more questions. In considering you saying, talking about like firefighters and teachers not having a place, I'm wondering, what's your target audience for this particular project? Because I'm understanding that it's another luxury project, and with the understanding in mind that Verdant is already luxury, I'm wondering why we're not offering any type of affordable housing? And again, like what's your target audience? Because when you're talking about luxury, I'm not seeing teachers and firefighters, and we're already kind of, one of the problems is not just lack of housing in the area, but it's also, it's, it's pretty expensive.
Right, understood. So our target with, with this type of, of apartment complex, I mean, it really varies. It's your millennials looking to move back home, it's your baby boomers that are looking to maybe downsize to not have to deal with all their home maintenance and homeownership anymore. It's, it's a four-story elevator serve, so that opens you up to an older audience as well. There may be some families and, and, you know, younger workforce. There are a lot of jobs here in Fairfield, and there often aren't people, enough people here to fill them. So it's, it's really a wide range, but I would say the majority probably millennial workforce. And in regards to the need for, you know, for affordable housing, we've obviously discussed this at length with city council members, with city staff. It's not something that we have done before. It's not that we're opposed to affordable housing. Obviously, we understand the need and, and very supportive. We felt, and, you know, it's probably better suited for somebody who specializes in affordable housing. And what we plan to do is we plan to pay into the city's fund for affordable housing so that we can contribute that way, so that those funds could be used for somebody who specializes in that and can make a better use of, you know, of, of an affordable development, like I think one that's taking place, 180 units on Texas Street with a, with an affordable developer, somebody that can probably make better use of those funds. And that's, that's what we would intend to do.
Thank you.
May I just interject as a point of reference? The Spanos Corporation does not currently own Verdant, and Verdant is currently an income-adjusted apartment complex. So it has both market rate and affordable housing aspects to it.
So Commissioner?
Did you finish your question?
Yes, but just to get clarity on what you just said. So Spanos does not own Verdant, but they are the owners of the upcoming project that's...
Yeah, they're the current developers of what we're calling Green Valley 2.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ward, please.
Thank you. I think you've somewhat answered my question regarding, I was going to ask about, there is an alternative to have, it looks like 23% for low-income residents. And obviously you've, your company has elected not to go that route to get this, to this done. So I wanted you to talk a little bit more about that, but it, it seems, you said, I think personally I have to disagree that you have to have some type of specialty to be able to offer affordable housing. I personally disagree with that, especially if it's only 23% of your units. And I agree with the other chairperson that having affordable housing for our teachers, I think, is the utmost importance. And yes, we do want those millennials coming in. So if you have anything else to share about that, because that would have gotten you that density bonus city code versus going through this option. So I'm just curious if you have any other comments about that.
Yeah, no, like I said, we're not opposed to it, and, and we have done it before. And it's just, it doesn't require somebody specializing in it. We just feel that, that they, they have more of the expertise to, to make better use of those funds. But when it comes to 23%, I would say that's, that's quite high for a project like this, especially one where we're proposing a central parking garage, wraparound units with the urban-style design. It's a, it's a really expensive endeavor, 20, 23% of affordable units probably does not, I can, not probably, definitely does not get the project to pencil. We have looked at things in the past where it's 5% of a very low income or something like that, that gets you a certain density bonus. Usually that density bonus is lower, it's, it's 15, 20%. The reason Mr. Feinstein suggested 23% low-income housing was because the density bonus needed would be 40-plus percent density bonus. So back to what I was saying, if you, if you have, you know, something more like 5%, it doesn't quite get you the density bonus that we need, but it's not something that, that, you know, we're strictly opposed to if the city wanted to, you know, to mandate it. But like I said, we're also planning to, to pay into the city's affordable housing fund and, and to, you know, have those funds go towards, towards affordable units. We understand the need.
And I, I just want to emphasize a point that Mr. Feinstein made. At this point, we're not actually talking about necessarily the merits of the project. They, they come into play, but we're not trying to approve the project. We're just trying to initialize, determine if we want to approve the initialization of the study for the project. That will delve into a lot of those concerns, but please go ahead.
I think my next comment was, I've noticed in other areas when they have these, I guess, dense apartment complexes, it seems like it's in an area where there's shopping, where there's transit, so they're getting people out of their cars so they can walk to the train station or the BART station. I, I know we don't have BART, but it seems like they're looking at that more of a holistic approach versus just a density project in one particular area. Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there is quite a bit within walking distance and biking distance, I would say, in the Green Valley area. I mean, you do have the shopping center right across the street. You have a bus stop right across the street at the library right there as well. And so I, I can agree that it, this more urban design is often seen in, in like a downtown setting, but, but we, you know, we still think it has, it has really great potential there.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rule.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We're ready for public comments. Is it Donnie Bennett?
Yeah, it'll be me.
Okay, you're number one, and followed by Donnie will be George Kennedy. And remember to please keep your comments limited to three minutes. We'll have some guidance for you as we go along, and please don't get upset if you're cut off.
Oh, I won't get upset. I, I apologize. I'm Donnie Bennett, by the way. I'm a resident of Fairfield. A little bit about myself, I grew up in Valeo, worked mental health for a number of years. From mental health, I went into law enforcement. Really busy career, currently retired. Enjoying my life in Fairfield over in the Green Valley area. However, with dense housing being proposed out there, I, I, my comments, I just don't believe that we're ready for that. If you live out there in Green Valley and, you know, you just drive around and you look at the area, Safeway, Costco, the schools, there's just, there's just not enough room for more people out there. Now, working law enforcement, I haven't spoken in front of people in a long time.
You're doing a wonderful job.
I apologize, a little shaky. I'm representing though. But working law enforcement and mental health, you know, you, you tend to look at behaviors and, and, you know, your local communities. And out there, there's just not enough resources to accommodate a vast housing population. Now, I've been, I did a little bit of homework, talked to a few folks, and the SEQA, I do believe it is, report needs to be adhered to. Are we familiar with that?
That, that's the environmental report that Mr. Feinstein?
I would hope that you guys would really take serious consideration into that. I believe that's essential as far as understanding what's going on out there. Again, I, gosh, I, I used to talk in front of hundreds of people.
One, one minute left.
But the environmental report and the SEQA report, you know, we, I, I heard a lot about traffic, and traffic is, is very, you know, a very big concern for us out there as far as getting around, especially in the evenings when folks take their kids to school in the morning. You know, it's, it's really important that you guys take a really good look at that and make those considerations for that. Working law enforcement, I'm looking at crime. If you've been out there in Green Valley, you take a drive around Safeway, it is ridiculous. it is ridiculous, the, the type of things that you see out there. Homelessness, people asking for money in front of the stores.
Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
We really appreciate you coming out-
Yeah.
-but your time is now up.
Wow, that was quick.
Yes, it was.
I didn't really get to the point. But just, just saying one thing, the more dense popul-, uh, the more dense buildings you guys put out there, the more people we have out there, the lackluster of, of crime going up, uh, uh, traffic, that really needs to be looked at with you guys.
Thank you.
It's not a money thing. It's a way of life. It's just comforting to, you know, that's it.
Thanks for sharing your concern. Next, we have Mr. Kennedy, followed by Alyssa Bolton. Am I saying that right? Allison, sorry. You'll be next. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Chairman and Commissioners, my name is George Kennedy. I'm a resident of Fairfield. Been down in that area since 1989, back before anything was built in that area. It was actually Chuck Super Cheaper on Green Valley Road, which is now part of Green Valley Road. First off, a real quick comment about to city staff. I'm very disappointed in the fact that you changed the agenda tonight in public comments and removed the email responses that up until this afternoon were going to be read aloud, and you mysteriously pulled them off. I'm disappointed in that.
So-
But back to, let me get, I, I'm at three minutes, so I want to get onto that.
Okay.
I'm going to keep this very basic. I'm asking you not to approve the project. Respectfully, I'm asking Nick and the Spanos Organization to pull this back for a while until the general plan update is done. The city is spending countless hours, countless staff time, and a whole lot of money to do a general plan update. The update will be done in approximately a year. This land has obviously been vacant for a long, long time. And until a general plan is properly updated, why would you want to observe what is in the process of being done? Delay this. It's all about timing. Get the general plan update done, see what's recommended, see what's going to happen. I don't believe this meets the criteria for a, for an overlay. But what, you know, I had somebody ask me today, what do you like about the project? What I do like about the project is the developer. The Spanos Organization does high quality. They run a great organization. They do things. They're community active. I have no problem with that aspect of it. But what I do have a problem with is you guys allowing this to go on and going around the general plan update that this city's doing right now. Delay this till that's done, then bring it back and come back with a proper proposal. And that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Just as a point of note, I believe most of the email items will be read by one of the attendees here later. So we'll try to address your concern that you raised there. Just before you begin, the next speaker after Ms. Bolton will be Jim Banks.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
You can pull down the mic a little bit.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And I think that the owners representing, it's good to hear your side and understand where you're coming from. I've been here for almost 20 years now. I used to be involved with a master plan for the area. And so I'm a little disturbed. No, I'm not a little. I'm extremely disturbed about this whole thing. I live right over that area. It takes me today to get to 680 and 80, anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour when I'm on Green Valley Road, today. Five years ago, maybe 20 minutes. You're adding, it possible 50 cars or more, really more, with putting a housing development in. It could multiply that. I didn't move out here to spend all my time sitting in a car wasting gas to get to the freeway. I'm very, very disappointed. An office building is one thing. That was what the whole area was zoned to do and to be, was all office. All of a sudden, it's getting worked into a living situation. Now, I'm an educator. I teach at the college. Okay, I can afford to live here because I'm making money. But I have students who live in the apartment complex on the corner there, the Business Center Drive in Mankas, that are paying over $2,500 a month for 900 square feet. 900, one bedroom. I don't see that as being conducive to somebody's school teacher, generally speaking. I don't think we're considering what we're doing here is the right thing to do. I agreed to an office building. I agreed to keep it commercial property. I never agreed to having it changed into a living situation. We have lots of other areas to build housing, but not there. That's just, it's the worst corner. The traffic will be horrendous. It'll just be terrible. It's hard enough to go down one lane with 50 cars, let alone 500 cars. And if you don't live here, I suggest you drive through there. And you'll find out what it's like. It's not-
About 40 seconds left.
Okay. But I'm pretty much wound up with everything. I just needed to share that much. So thank you very much. Do not pass us. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton, thank you. After Mr. Banks, we'll have Carol, and I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this name. Chervinko, thank you very much. Please.
Hey, I just moved here from Dallas two months ago to the corner of Sassoon Valley area and business, it's close to the business, it's in West America. So I'm right there. I'm like a half mile away from this new proposed development. And just the traffic, I go there, I go bike, I have an autistic son. I put him on a bicycle built for two. I go out there every day. And, and I'd stay on the sidewalks on Business Center because, much of the time, because the bicycle path, there's so much traffic on that, that I, I just feel it's safer to be on the sidewalk on a bicycle built for two. The traffic's very heavy. I have a question about the, in the 48 units per acre, would they not be willing to do it for 32 units per acre? Or is there just, would they do it for only 32 and stay within the standards or not? But anyway, I imagine the efficiency, I associate that with profitability. And, and the more you get into 48, you get 48 units, you have more profitability. Might as well go to 64 units, you know? Just go ahead and get, get as much as you can because it profits the most for the developer. So I'm also thinking about, they're not living here, and they won't be here 10 years, 12 years from now when the traffic is heavier. And this development starts to get rundown in 10, 15 years. And I just moved out of an apartment that was considered an upper-class living area where it was two bedrooms. And the people below, me and my wife, had two couples in a two-bedroom, and they had five kids between the two of them. So there were nine people living in a nine-bedroom. So as time goes on, this, they're just more and more just start to accumulate because the cost of a, per unit of housing is, is just, it just gets higher and higher, and they need more people in to be able to make their rents. And so as time goes on, I just see this in 10 years is affecting the values of our homes, in 15 years even more so, and in 20 years, these developers will be gone. And they've made their money initially, and they're not living here. They're not seeing the traffic and, and they're not keeping up with the rundown of the, of the apartment as time goes on. So anyway, that's, that's me as a new homeowner that didn't even know this was coming. Because I moved here because it was a family development area. And I was surprised to see the one that's on the corner, Sassoon Valley and Business Valley, because when I moved in two months ago, and it still has a sign out there, and I didn't know this, but the sign out there says, it says out there on the sign, it says, Business Center Drive, it says, 132-acre office park, Class A office space site available. Green Valley Corporate, CorporatePark.com. I think, great, more business, more money, more, more, you know, more folks moving in with jobs here. And I didn't know that was just an apartment complex. So I was pretty disappointed to see that sign and find out it's, it's apartment complex. So anyway, I just don't want to see more of that and higher traffic and everything else that goes on further down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Appreciate you coming down. After Carol's comments, Doug Smith will be the next speaker.
Thank you to the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you to the Commission for allowing the public to voice their opinions here. Number one, I asked the Commission to delay this project. My initial vote would be to not do this project at all, but upon listening to Mr. Smith, I think a delay is a very good compromise. Secondly, under this Section 25, 28.6, Section A, it talks about four items that must be met. It says "and" after each item. It does not say "or." For example, is this a creative and an imaginative design that is superior to those attainable under conventional standards? I don't consider five stories for a parking garage to be creative or imaginative. Don't forget, we sit on the Green Valley Fault with a five-story anything that will sustain some sort of damage regardless of the type that, of the way that it is built. Secondly, it's supposed to encourage integrated development of parcels might otherwise be developed in unrelated increments. It probably does that. It's supposed to promote a more economic and efficient use of the land, allowing a variety of housing and industrial activities with a high level of urban amenities. I did not hear anything today about any amenities. And lastly, it's supposed to safeguard the environment. Again, I get back to the Green Valley Fault. That fault is supposed to go once every 500 years, and we are past 500 years. I would expect a earthquake of some magnitude to be in this area. The higher we build up, the more damage we will have. So I thank you today.
Thank you for your comments. After Mr. Smith, Desiree Bodyford. Am I saying that right?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Douglas Smith. I've been a resident of Fairfield since 1986. I actually live right down the street from Mr. George Kennedy. Him and I, his children, my children grew up and played together. Getting to the point here, though, when I lived here in 1986, Rodriguez High School, all the commercial LTL buildings, Green Valley, none of that existed. It was a sea of wildflowers, all yellow mustard flowers as far as you could see. And I got to tell you, that four-story monstrosity that is being built on Business Center Drive and Sassoon Valley Drive, that has ruined the charm of Sassoon Valley. Has ruined it.
I am so upset with whoever made that decision. When, when I saw it going up, I was thinking, okay, two stories, okay, maybe. Then another story, then another story. Who approved that?
That was crazy. That is like the gateway to our beautiful little valleys out there. And why are we destroying it? It's a visual blight. And now you want to put another one on that corner? A five-story parking garage in the middle of it? Are you kidding me? I mean, this is, come on, folks. This is, this is insane. Do not do this. And I agree with George, wait till we have the general plan revised. They're asking for input on that from all of the citizens? Let's all put our input into the general plan. Wait till the general plan is complete, and then we will have another meeting on whether this is viable. Mr. Rule, I, I just cannot believe your incentive from your company for the high density. It's only a profit motive. I mean, you know that. Anyways, I could speak for 40 minutes. I have enough notes here to speak for 40 minutes, but I know my time is almost up. Thank you very much for hearing, listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. After Desiree, Christopher Railford. Is that-
Hi, my name's Desiree Bodyford, and I live in Green Valley, diagonal from the project site in Creekside Meadows Community. And I, as a lot of us here know, that I love Green Valley. I moved there from Sassoon. I'm from Los Angeles. When you guys talk about an urban area, I'm from LA. I know what you're talking about. I get it. But I didn't move to Green Valley for that. And we'll all probably speak to that when we get to the, the general plan. But what you guys are trying to do, I do have an 18-year-old who's a senior in high school at Rodriguez High School. She has, you guys talk about the elementary schools, but she has 41 kids in one of her class, you know? That my child has a learning disability that she's been overcoming over these years. And 41 kids in a class is unacceptable. That, and that's high school, okay? We drive down single-lane, double-lane roads every day in traffic where it's only a five-minute drive when there's no traffic and 30-minute drives when there is traffic. When we talk about it having, it is a business park. We all want jobs here. So why would we, you can't compare a office buildings, all of those comparisons that you were doing. Yeah, that may not have been the proper zoning at the time, but they still brought jobs here. They still were businesses that were being in this area, which we all want to see. That home site is not going to do that. It's not going to bring jobs. Sorry. And then also talking about, if you, if you talk about that urban environment, we don't have the transportation, you know? The bus is hit or miss when it, when it's there or not. My kid can't take the bus. And then we also have multifamily generational livings together now. I have my mother-in-law living with me. I have my 18-year-old living with me. And when she goes to college, she's going to stay living with me. And that's what's happening. Like, we already heard, you have five kids, nine people living in a house. I, I have staff that tell me, they have multi-generational family members, grandmothers, aunties, nieces, all living in a home. That's what's going to happen. And that's so, it's not going to be 500 cars, because I already have four cars in my house, you know? It's not going to be 500 cars, double that, because you're going to have more people, more driving. There's no road space for that. You're not investing in the infrastructure, or you're not requiring them to invest in infrastructure that would widen our roads, allow for more traffic, or, or, or anything. And then you're only also looking at possibly adding elementary schools. You're not looking at the other schools. And Green Valley having extra 50, that's only because Cordelia, I mean, Oakbrook opened up to middle school. So it allowed for middle school to be spread out. All right.
Thank you so much for coming in. After Christopher speaks, Christian Thomas Cook, please.
Hello, I'm a homeowner here. I live right in Lakeshore. I'm very lucky to live in between the senior center and where those office personal buildings are. I look out straight through that middle there, that open strip. It's the most beautiful place I've ever looked at. I look out, I see dark skies and nothing but stars. You're going to throw, I, I don't throw in a five-story parking lot there. I don't know whoever said I want that in Green Valley. I, I just don't. I talked to all my neighbors. We've discussed this. No one ever said they wanted that. No one wants high-density houses. It's great that they want to build that, but guess what? They don't leave, they leave, but they leave a traffic problem. That's up to the city to fix, and that's up to the state to fix. That's not up to them to fix. So do you guys have that money to fix that problem? Because if we don't have that money bookmarked to fix what they're going to put in, I don't even know why this is even being discussed. Second of all, we need, I love the fire department. It's coming. But the four-story, that's a little much. It could have been two or three. It would have been fine. Why don't we have a fire, a, a police presence also there? I'm not asking it to be, you know, kind of like a police, a, a police state, you know, we're all being, you know, watched by them. But it's nice to have people there, like we have the situation in the, the grocery store parking lot. I would like to see them roaming around my neighborhoods. I'd like to know who they are. Should have that extra there, especially if we're going to bring in more housing, especially with that complex that's going in now. Also, we need grocery stores. We have no extra grocery stores. Look at all that extra land. Why don't you put up some areas where you could put in food trucks that come in on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights? Make it a family-friendly environment. All families live there. There's so many things that we could do with this open land. I understand it's commercial. That's fine. But we could find commercial ways of using it. There's no reason why we can't find a commercial way to build some kind of a park to feed people. We don't have a lot of food choices out here. Kind of stuck with very limited stuff. I'm not asking for San Francisco variety, but something worth there and something that's changing, something that makes me feel like I'm part of a community. And that's what I think, if you start throwing in more multiplexes, it's not going to be Green Valley the community. It's going to be Green Valley the city. And I just don't know whoever is asking for this, said, we want this here. It's, it's just not welcomed. It's just not.
Thank you for sharing your views. I know everybody's very supportive of each other's comments, but just because of time, if we can, hold the applause till the end. Okay, after Kristen, Glenn Gartley. Is that right? Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to read this. My husband told me to read because he says I can get emotional. I call it passionate, but, you know, we have our differences with that. A little bit about us, we got ready to move here about five, six years ago, both getting ready to retire from the military. I did 24 years in the Coast Guard, he did 20 years in the Coast Guard, a lot of moving around, and we just wanted a nice community to come live in. Two years ago, we stood here, we asked the planning committee, later the city council, not to go forward with this apartment complex that is now an ISO or terrible half a mile from my house. We cited reasons such as outdated environmental impact studies, traffic concerns, lack of grocery stores, lack of schools in a location that makes sense. I know there's a current proposal for one on the corner of Rockville and Susan Road, terrible idea, and overall infrastructure for the area. We talked about how the project and others like it were not in line with the original city plan for the area, and that rezoning it piece by piece was deceitful. We talked about safety concerns, as there's already little to no police present in our area despite feeling that crime is rising. We talked about if there was an actual emergency, which of course with all the wildfires is always a concern, that trying to get out of this neighborhood would be a huge problem. All of these were good, sound reasons not to approve that plan. All of those were the logical reasons as to why we asked for that project to be denied. Then there were the emotional reasons that those of us in this community bought homes in Green Valley because we wanted a more rural suburban life, and how drastically changing the city plan, especially the backhanded way that it was being done, would be wrong. But the city of Fairfield went forward with that plan anyway. What that said to us at the time was that the city of Fairfield, while they're all too happy to take our high property taxes that we pay every year and that they do not care about the people of Green Valley, or perhaps it is greed that fueled that decision, greed to take money that would be paid out by the developers in environmental fees, why they admitted that they nor the school board were under any obligation to spend it in our area they were trying to impact. On a side note, they said the school district said there was no problem a couple of years ago. The school district may have said that, but people called the schools, and every single school said they were overcrowded, so that was kind of a lie.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, go through here, so, let's see. We're here a few years later, nothing has been done to alleviate any of those concerns. No environmental impact study is going to even account for the impacts of traffic for the projects that have yet to be finished. If they just want to short-sightedly take the money of these environmental impact fees without looking at the long-term impact of the city in Fairfield, it's going to turn Green Valley into an overcrowded urban area that nobody here wants. Just like the state of California, which has seen an exodus of people for a number of reasons, this area will suffer. People of Green Valley who have lived here for so many years, they're going to move, they're going to take their money with them. And while, yes, there's a need for affordable housing, there are more responsible locations to build those.
Thank you so much for your comments. After Glenn, Arnold Josselson, please.
All right, first, general plan. This is zoned for something. That means the public, and you are our representatives, we don't want houses out there. We want a business park. You need to do what we want, right? Don't deviate from what has been accepted. That's supposed to be a business park. Don't put housing out there. There's a whole lot of other things I'm going to talk about, but everybody else already has. Resources and infrastructure, traffic. So really, what it comes down to is, I want to separate Green Valley and Cordelia from Fairfield, because you guys have cherry-stemmed out there, and you don't need to be out there. Fairfield needs to stay within Fairfield. You've got plenty of places, empty lots, old schools have been torn down. You can build all the high-density crap you want. I don't want to live in the city. I live in a rural place because that's where I want to live. I don't want somebody coming from Stockton, and there's plenty of shit over in Stockton that needs fixing. Stay there. I know, I have a friend that lives there, and I go there about once a month. So this is what I want to say to you. I don't want to be part of Fairfield. I don't want them to continue annexing where we live. I want to know who wants to be part of Green Valley, Cordelia, city our own. I've already been talking to Monica Brown about it, and it's going to happen. And I'm going to be talking to all of you.
Thank you for your comments. After Arnold will be Dennis Twiss, is it? Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for letting us all give our opinions about this project. My name is Dr. Arnold Josselson, forensic pathologist. I work for the sheriff's department here in Fairfield. And the big, the big problem is traffic. The problem is people in Green Valley want to get to the other side of the freeway. There's only one lane. We have two ways of doing it. In the morning, people taking their kids to Rodriguez, it's, it's, it's gridlocked. And with, if, if there were businesses or offices there, then those people coming in in the morning would not affect our traffic going out. And then in the evening, they're going out and we're trying to come in. So it would not be that much of a problem if there were offices there. But with people living there, they're going to have to use the same roads as we do now, and the traffic's just going to get worse and worse. It's going to be karma-gotten.
Thank you, Dr. Arnold. After Dennis will be Brenda Nicolai.
Hi, thanks for what we talked. I'll be brief. I would be really redundant just voicing what people have already said, but the one thing I noticed, and I'm not a designer, is it looks like there's one way in and one way out. So we have a potential fire area, and we also live in an earthquake fault, and we're going to have probably a couple hundred cars coming out that one way with several hundred people. Good luck.
Thank you. After Brenda will be Janet Mix, Minsk.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Nicolai. I'm a resident of the Green Valley Lakes neighborhood, two blocks away from the proposed parcel that is being reviewed to rezone to residential from commercial. I am here today to recommend that the commission's to vote against rezoning the small parcel of land to residential and keeping it as commercial. My key reasons are minimal impact to our nearby schools and minimal impact to the traffic in the area at high-peak times. Traffic in that immediate area is horrendous. Rezoning the parcel to residential and adding 268 apartments adds more than 500 cars to the media area, as the applicant has confirmed. We will see this impact immediately at Green Valley Road and Business Center Drive and trying to get to the freeway. What happens if we have another evacuation? Doesn't anyone remember the Atlas Fire and people being evacuated from East Ridge? How do we get out of the media area with all these cars and fire behind us? Did you know the intersection at Green Valley Road and Business Center Drive takes approximately three to four minutes for it to fully cycle all the way through? Minimum 45 seconds per each light. How do I know this? I sat at that light at 4:00 PM Sunday evening and did a stopwatch of how long it took to cycle through the lights. Mind you, at this time, it was lighter traffic than normal due to being a late Sunday, but check out during the middle of the week at peak times at morning, lunch, and evening. The cycle through the lights would be even longer. Also, there is another light on Business Center Drive mere feet from this main intersection to allow drivers from the freeway off-ramp, as well as westbound Business Center traffic filtering into this intersection. I've seen it back up all the way to Rockville Road because Highway 80 was backed up. Please note, I live one mile from Safeway and Costco in Green Valley Lakes neighborhood, and riding my bike or walking takes less time to get to these locations than it would if I got in my car to drive. I'm a runner. I run down Green Valley Road and up Business Center Drive and down Mangels, and it is already horrendous. I put my life in danger when I ride my bike. I put my life in danger when I run down these streets because of all the cars. They do not care about pedestrians. They do not care about students riding their bike from our neighborhood to the Neldamundi School. They do not care about parents running across the streets. I've stood at Green Valley and Mangels Road on the corner, walking my dog and hearing cars slam on their brakes to prevent hitting children in the morning who get to school. We do not need to add more traffic to our area. That means 268 apartments go away. Let's have commercial. It is zoned for commercial. We all knew that when we bought in this immediate area. Keep it commercial. And we know that commercial is relevant because you're building right there, and you're building right there, commercial. We know that it is in need in our area. So find something to put there besides housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Brenda. After Janet will be Pam Cherry.
One thing I haven't heard addressed in this meeting today is, my husband and I are in our 70s now, mid-70s, and night driving is almost impossible for us. We need more commercial places in our area so that we can come out in the evenings if we choose to. Also, everybody's talked about the traffic, the school. You're bringing in, you say 24 children in all this big building. I don't believe that. I don't believe that. My grandchildren, some of them went to Neldamundi. It's a high-rate of school. People want to be in that school district. That's great. I want everybody to be happy, but you gotta consider those of us, older people and young people, if you fill up the space where we really sat and thought about and said, "We can feel safe, we can walk around in that neighborhood." Now, you can't let your children ride to school on their bikes because people are flying up and down Mangels. It's already crowded. So how are you going to bring 500, 600 more people into a place that's supposed to be quiet and nice? And I hate that apartment building. I hate it, because when I go down there on Sassoon Valley Road, I like to see the hills. Now I see this big, ugly apartment building that I think is going to bring more trouble to the area in all terms. So anyway, I don't want it.
Thank you, Janet, for your comments. After Pam will be Alex Fernandez.
Good evening. I just wrote some notes down, so it might not be in chronological order, but I'm just going to speak. The apartment complex would change the landscape in Green Valley. The developer came to the mic and said, "I don't want to see the city to turn into a concrete jungle." Well, it's already have started to turn into a concrete jungle in Green Valley with the apartment complex, and it's already being built, and the one that his business is proposing. It's definitely an eyesore. I welcome the board to drive by the school in the morning and the afternoon and look at the traffic. Couple of days ago, a police officer was out there directing traffic. That was the first time I saw a police officer since school started because of the traffic problem. I ride my bike with my granddaughter every day to school, and it, that's the only way we can get there really in a timely manner, because otherwise a police officer will be directing me to go another direction. That's how bad it is. The design of the school, the, for the traffic flow is horrible. There's residential area, there's not enough space for people to come in and go out. There's signs everywhere, there's traffic guards, all that to get people in and out in a timely manner, but it's still very, very difficult. And the rain has not even started yet. I ask you to drive by the intersection during commute hour and see how difficult it is to come in and out of that area. I ask you to drive by the neighborhood and see if a monstrosity like that is, is good for the landscape and would complement that particular area. I don't know if you ever driven to, visiting any one of these apartment complexes. My daughter just moved out of one, unfortunately, into one of my, into my apartment, my condo, so she's basically back at home, but when I try to visit her, there's no place to park. There's always more cars than there is parking spaces. Plus, if she wanted an extra parking space, she had to pay for it. So that was not discussed. So where are all these people going to park? The number he mentioned was 500. I don't know how he determined that, that 500 cars, when you got adults coming back home, everybody has a car. Rent is high. You want to attract school teachers. I don't know what the rent is and that particular, would be at that particular location, but it's approximately about $2,000 for one bedroom. That's very expensive for a school teacher, even for a one-bedroom. In 1990, the office park area, it was located, it was determined to be an office park.
Apologies, Pam.
Okay.
Can you?
Okay. Anyway, let me wrap it up and say that, that, you had a slide that said, PD zoning slide, creative and imaginative design, efficient use of land, and safeguard the environment. I don't think this apartment complex meets any of that criteria.
Thanks for your comments, Pam. After Alex will be Joni Hayes.
I appreciate the opportunity from the commissioners and my fellow community members to speak and air out my concerns. I feel like many of my fellow community members, I kind of missed my opportunity the first go-around with the current development, and so I felt like it was critical for me to come here and share my concerns over the current proposal. Feel like it's a speak now or forever hold my peace kind of deal. So my name's Alex. I live walking distance from the proposed development, and when my wife and I were looking at a place to live and start a family, Green Valley was very appealing to us. And three of our top priorities were a school district and a quiet and safe community. So I have two young children, one a third grader in Neldamundi, and another one who will be starting kindergarten in the fall. And I haven't done my own personal research, but I can speak to my personal experience. During the pandemic, there was a fear in setting my daughter to school, and so I called and asked if, what would happen if I pulled her and did a home learning instead? And they told me that they're so full that if I pulled her, there's no guarantee that when things clear up, she'd have a spot back, which was pretty disheartening to me. The lack of three-bedroom units doesn't guarantee limiting the amount of school-aged children, so I think that's important to consider. And the other thing I'd ask the developer is, what happens if you do do the study and they say there isn't enough space for kids? Are you going to pull back the project? Are you going to reconsider? Same question refers to the traffic research that hasn't been done. If you sit there and count cars, or however you come to the conclusion that the traffic is going to be affected, what is your next move? Are you going to pull back the project? I would think, and just a side note, that this is a pretty important milestone for the developer, and without having done research on traffic or current school capacity, I think that lack of due diligence really, it makes me question their real intent here. So I'll wrap up. The safety is an issue. We moved there in 2017. I haven't really seen any police car patrols, but I have had the unfortunate incident of having to report a crime in my home. And I'm not anticipating an influx of crime with this new development, but what I'm saying is that, that combination of more people and the combination of the lack of police presence currently, it can't be a good combination. So I'm asking that you guys respectfully not approve the project. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing your views, Alex. After Joni Heaton-Mains, is that right? Yeah. Healden. Okay.
Hello, my name is Joni. I want to thank you all for your service, being here. And I actually live close to that facility. My house is actually in that picture. I was also born at Travis Air Force Base, so I'm quite familiar, been in this community for quite a long time. So I'm a registered nurse. I actually commute to the Bay Area, to Berkeley, and I actually commute to the Bay Area, to Berkeley, and I have to deal with the traffic going down Green Valley Road. And so that's my main concern right now, is the traffic that it's gonna bring, especially with the other apartment complex that's being built down the street. Personally, I've actually had a funeral in my family, and because of what the leftover food, I fed the homeless that was right behind the hotel there, and they call it the conservatory wetlands over there. And so we actually need to feed the homeless. I mean, I know we're talking about not wanting to approve this, but there's also problems within the community and affordable housing and housing the homeless. So my main concern too is that with all this traffic that it's gonna bring to the community, it's going to overflow into the surrounding areas. So the entrances and the exits for the freeways will affect both the Red Top and Abernathy exits. If people can't get through, they're gonna consider other alternatives. So what I've witnessed in the mornings commuting to work is a lot of the high school, Rodriguez High School students backed up on Red Top Drive to where it's gotten so bad that they're backed up on the freeway, so they're going over to the shoulder, so they're not getting hit by big rigs in the slow lane. And to me, that's of a concern. And I think that that issue's so bad that it's probably gonna make that situation worse. And so I'm just respectfully asking you to decline and reject this proposal, so that I just don't want that something's gonna be so terrible that it's gonna take a high school student to be injured on the freeway or killed. And let's just prevent all of that if we can. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing your views, Joni. And then after Mr. Mains will be Tyler Lazovich. Is that anywhere close?
Thanks.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I live in Green Valley. I have lived there for 20 years before, when it was still unincorporated. I feel like the others who have been passionate in what it was that they were saying, please do not let this zoning happen. I understand that you have to make a living. I'm not mad at you for what it is that you're trying to do, but please do not mess up where it is that we live. I paid good money for my home. It was supposed to be an investment. They promised that this was only gonna be zoned for industrial, for commercial use. And then the apartment sprang up, and now I can't see the freeway or the hillsides as I'm driving to get there to know which way to go. I feel very strong like the others, but I wanna just say it from a place of, this is not gonna work. It's just not gonna work. And if, do any of you live in Green Valley? Okay, so then you understand, there's not enough infrastructure for this. There's not enough on the roads. There's not enough with the supermarket. There's not enough with just the one Costco. For all it is that's coming in, so much more is needed, and we don't have that. So just from a person who's lived here, who's raised my children here, please don't allow this zoning to happen. It will really mess up a beautiful thing.
Thanks for sharing your views. After Tyler, and I wanna hear how you say your last name.
Lavarovic.
Lavarovic, thank you. Nora will be our next.
So everybody's talked about traffic, everybody's talked about infrastructure, we need police, we need everything in our little town. So I'm not gonna beat that dead horse. David, are you an elected official or an appointed official? You're part of this board, right? You're not part of this board? Why were you?
He's a director and...
So he's part of the city?
Yes.
Why were you giving the presentation for these guys, selling, pitching it, if you're our representative or the city's representative? Shouldn't they be here pitching it? Or do you have a secondary interest? Are they providing you with money for that? Why are you pitching it? If you work for us, if you work for our tax dollars, for whatever hours you may put in? You might have another job. Please, sir.
So I'm a city staff person. My job is to process applications that come into the city. Anyone has a right to submit an application. It's city staff's responsibility to present information to the planning commission. That's my job, that's what I do.
And I will just add that this is a usual and customary way that all projects are presented.
It seemed like you worked for the company when you stood up there. So I mean, I just had to ask. He's on the board, I just need to know that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great night.
Thank you for sharing your views.
We really should lead you to Fairfield.
Nora.
I was just going to suggest, Chair, that we check for any Zoom calls first, just in the spirit of making sure that we're not having any redundant comments.
Okay. Brian and Brian, are there any Zoom calls?
Yes, there are. Okay, first up, we have an unnamed iPhone user. I'm gonna ask him to unmute, if you could introduce yourself, you have three minutes to speak.
Allow me to check.
You should be able to speak now.
Okay, hi, my name is Monica Silva, and I live in the Sienna neighborhoods right behind that development. And I just wanted to say my comment that I also agree with most of the other public comments, that I do not agree with this proposal.
So I believe we do have some Zoom calls, they're working on the audio. Okay.
Oh, hello?
Let me check to see about how long it will take. Okay.
I have everything on.
All right, there's something on our end. Hold off one second.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you on the stream. It's, we're having a trouble hearing you in the actual council chamber, so.
I can't hear out there.
We might have to stand by on the Zoom comments for just a second until we fix this, and let's continue in person.
Okay, just let me know when you have it figured out.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, thank you for your patience.
So it's gonna take them a little bit to...
Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay.
My comment, opinion on this is that I think the money would be far better spent on more public transportation options rather than creating more traffic congestion for the area. We lived in the Green Valley-Cordelia area since 1992, and the amount of people and traffic created has become troublesome with no way or mention of ways of alleviating our current traffic problems that we are already experiencing. My suggestion is that money be put forward, excuse me, toward more public transportation solutions. Example, an intercity light rail system through Cordelia-Green Valley to Fairfield proper. Next, Tyler. I am trying to understand how the town of Fairfield-Cordelia can justify cramming in more housing apartments without the infrastructure to support them. Cordelia has one grocery store, limited narrow city street access, horrific speeding issues, 680 overcrowding, and not enough schools. Before one more house is built for the profit of large corporations and campaign donations, let's fix the ongoing problems that the residents are starting to group together on. Thank you for your consideration. Next, Karen Stanovich. Hello, Fairfield Planning Commission. As a fifth-generation Fairfield resident, I strongly oppose rezoning the planned two-story office building in the Green Valley Corporate Park behind the residence inn for so many reasons. I live in Green Valley for the quality of life. Rezoning to a high-density four-story apartment building would be irresponsible. Traffic is already congested in the area. Traffic will become more impacted when the middle Green Valley development is completed with up to 400 additional homes. Traffic will become more impacted when the apartments at the corner of Sussun Valley and Business Center Drive are completed. Water shortages and sewer capacity are concerns. Lack of space in existing schools is a concern. Busing to schools is not available, which is already creating huge traffic issues around existing schools. Safety for parents and children walking to and from schools has become an issue. We've been experiencing an increase in crime and homeless activity in this area for several years. We are already underserved by the Public Safety Department. Green Valley and Cordelia families rely on the Green Valley area for grocery shopping and basics, all of which are becoming more and more impacted. The planned office building would provide quality jobs for Fairfield's residents and keep them from commuting. Imagine living in the development behind the proposed site if it were to double in height and tower over your backyard. A two-story building in this setting would be a much better neighbor. Quality of life, adding a high-density apartment in this location is not responsible and does not add to the quality of life for the Green Valley area. After years of careful planning, this short notice proposed change is not a fit for the Green Valley Corporate Park. Thank you for adding my comments to your minutes. I'm sorry I was not able to attend the meeting. Next, Judy Myers. Stop changing the zoning without a vote. Next, Stella Aldridge. We object to this rezoning from offices to apartments for the same reasons. Traffic is a nightmare, let alone where is the water gonna come from. Would rather have open space, but that's not going to happen. No more apartments. From Mike and Stella Aldridge. Next, from Patricia Nucci. Hello, I am writing to oppose the 268 apartment project. I've lived in Green Valley ever since 2001. I'm very involved with the school and our community. Green Valley cannot take these many new housing projects. Our community as we know it will be ruined. The traffic is already bad, and with this, it's going to be absolutely chaotic. School drop-off and pickup is going to be a nightmare and highly impact the lives of those that live around here as well. If this planning continues, it's going to heavily impact our schools, which are already impacted. We do not have the infrastructure necessary to take on more housing in this community. This committee is obviously doing this out of greed and could care less about the future of our community and our children. Water supply will also be an issue. There are so many things that will be impacted. I think what they wanna do is a crime to our community. It's a very sad, it's very sad and quite upsetting. In addition, it will attract a large number of people that don't intend to make Green Valley their long-term home. It will attract many transitional and temporary individuals who have, who have no roots here and won't care for the community like they should. Please listen to the community and stop this before it's too late. Next, Jason Biggs. Hello, Fairfield City Council, okay, he got mixed up. Planning Commission. I am an 18-year resident of the Green Valley area. I urge you not to rezone the area at the corner of Business Center Drive and Green Valley Road into a residential area. Our main street, Green Valley Road, is the only access to westbound I-80 and southbound I-680 for all of Green Valley and Sussun Valley. The on-ramp and intersection of Green Valley Road and Business Center is already a mess every morning from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 as families try to get their kids to school and get to work. Adding more apartments will only make this problem worse, in addition of concerns about increased crime that comes with apartment complexes. Verdant Apartments and Vine Apartments already exist and were supposed to be luxury apartments. They underwent a change of ownership in 2019 and no longer accept high-income tenants. We do not need more, excuse me, apartment complexes in our area. Please keep this area zoned as commercial. Next, Maureen Quarter. I am writing to voice my disapproval of the effort to rezone more commercial areas to high-density residential. Specifically, I am voicing concerns about rezoning a planned office building into 200-plus high-density apartments without any planned increases to infrastructure or school capacity in the Green Valley and Nelson Hill areas. It is bad enough that the Gold Hill 3 zoning was approved over community protests with zero infrastructure enhancements. But continuing to rezone areas of the city that cannot handle the increase in regular residential traffic, as well as the fact that the local schools are over capacity with no plans to add support, shows poor oversight on behalf of both the city council as well as the planning commission. Clearly, no one in either group has been forced to sit in traffic that these projects have caused. There is also the issue of safety for students walking into schools in the area. There's no mention of better crosswalks or traffic enforcement to protect a vulnerable population that might try to take shortcuts against increasingly busy roadways. As it is, drivers already excessively speed down the area roads, stopping, excuse me, running stop signs, driving on shoulders, with the number of vehicles on the road only increasing and no planned widening or improvements to traffic flow. Both the planning commission and city council are making the decisions to rezone these areas to increase tax revenue or appease contributors to their own political agendas without a thought to the local communities who must deal with the consequences of these shortsighted actions. There's also inadequate sewer and water infrastructure for these new projects, and it is highly unlikely that there are plans to improve them. As a resident of the Cordelia community, I object to the rezoning of any areas designated as commercial in favor of high-density residential projects without immediate improvements to our roads and schools. Next, Keith and Liz Fitchner. Unfortunately, my husband and I cannot attend the public meeting for Spanos's rezoning application in Green Valley. We strongly urge you to vote no and request that you focus on bringing projects such as this to the downtown area where there is zoning for higher density. This would... This would also revitalize the area and bring a more vibrant downtown that will support shops, restaurants, and employers. Please work with the developer to bring this project to the downtown area instead of Green Valley where residents are against this project. The downtown area in Fairfield needs this revitalization, and I know there are areas in the downtown area that not only allow this higher density but would also support it and most importantly thrive from it. Thank you for your time and consideration. Dear Planning Commission, this is from Stephanie Tramont. I understand that it has been proposed to change the use of a lot in Green Valley from commercial to residential, specifically the addition of 268 apartment units. As a homeowner for over 10 years, I vehemently oppose this proposal. Green Valley's roads are already congested at peak hours. Schools are already full in a typical school year, and staffing remains an issue and likely will continue. We have one grocery store here while the nearest alternative grocery store is five miles away. We have few businesses in two busy shopping centers. We already have several new apartment buildings and now an additional hotel being built extremely close to homes. We do not need or want more apartment buildings. As public servants, we want you to make decisions that serve the community, not only land developers and investors. Invest in community. Invest in businesses that add value and culture to our area. Green Valley is currently considered a bedroom community, a place where people sleep only. This is an opportunity to change that, and I hope you will. Okay, next is from Diane Segarra. Dear Planning Department, as a 24-year resident of Green Valley, I am asking you not to change the general plan to include more apartments where it is currently zoned commercial. Year after year, we have seen the zoning change to include more housing with no improvements on roads or traffic control, no new schools or parks, and no new businesses such as grocery stores, restaurants, or other services like veterinary offices, police stations, community centers, or entertainment centers. With more parcels being changed to residential, that leaves less and less space for much-needed stores and services and traffic improvements. There are already numerous approved residential areas that have not been built out. Once these approved homes and apartments are completed, the increase in traffic will be exponential. The schools are already crowded and there is no busing available for students. When parents need to take their students to school, the entire area gets into gridlock. Green Valley Road is the only westbound entrance for miles. Please keep the current zoning as commercial and stop the madness of adding residential in areas that cannot easily accommodate them. It's called a plan for a reason. It's meant to keep development in areas orderly, not a hodgepodge of mixed-use buildings. Next is from Hillary Harper. I would like to comment that I am against the building for 268 new apartments proposed in Green Valley. The meeting to discuss this is in October 13th and I am unable to attend. I am a nine-year homeowner in the Sienna community right next to where they are proposing to build this. In order to do this, they have to pass a rezoning of the lot. This is a tiny lot, not designed for such a project. Where will, where will these residents park? And with the addition of the Hilton and 300-unit complex on the same road, it's a dangerous and hazardous proposal. There's only one street to get into the freeway, 80 going towards San Francisco, which is already stop-and-go when residents are trying to get to work or when schools start or get out. If there ever was an accident or an emergency, no one would be able to get out onto Business Center or onto the highway. There is so much vacant land farther from this congested area, it makes no sense. I pray this rezoning and proposal does not go through for the safety of the residents. It could also potentially devalue homes, bring crime, and decrease the quality of life for current residents who invested in properties in this area. Next is from Jackie Arama. Hello, this is my first time ever sending in a comment to any public office hearing. I am strongly against the proposed change to zoning laws in order to build the 268 apartment units in lieu of the planned office building. As an engineer, I believe the area needs more offices and retail space in order to keep us locals working in this area as opposed to driving to the bay. If we live and work here, we keep the money in the community. Secondly, my child is only two years old, and I'm already anxious about whether he will have space at any of the schools in this area and if the school quality will be good. If the schools continue getting impacted, their ratings will go down, which in turn drives down the value of the homes in the area. We need larger schools with better resources, a point for another day. Building more apartments only puts more strain on the existing infrastructure that was not designed to serve the increased population. And as a project management professional, I can't help but wonder, what's the point of having a plan if it can be thrown out at any moment? Shouldn't you always plan the work? Then work the plan? Next is from Brittany Gordon. Hello, I have lived in the Green Valley area for over 15 years. We are steadily seeing the decline of this beautiful calm area that we are in. The city planners have no real pulse for this area. We have one lousy Safeway, no police station, one school that is at capacity, and yet we are trying to build more apartments in the, in this area. Traffic, it's already a mess. Can we please consider more retail and not approve more housing? We need a police station that covers Green Valley and Cordelia. We have seen a lot of homelessness, break-ins, all kinds of things that are occurring in this area. Police take wherever to get here now. I do not understand that there is a housing shortage, homelessness. I understand that there is a housing shortage, homelessness. However, the homeless is not lining up to pay these high prices in home nor rent. Can we please consider retail for this area? No more homes. Can we consider another school? Can we please build a police station before we add additional housing? These are serious concerns from residents who have been here for years, and this area is just terrible now. Next is from Eli Hefner. Dear Planning Commission, I am writing to you regarding the proposal to rezone a parcel of land in Green Valley from office space to very high-density housing. I recently learned about this proposal and it is deeply troubling. Before I get into my concerns, I'd like to provide some context. The parcel of land is located at the corner of Business Center Drive and Green Valley Road. The lot is approximately 5.7 acres, and the builders, Spanish Corporation, would like to construct a four-story-high, 48-unit-per-acre apartment buildings on the land. This could yield as much as 270 units, over 400 cars, over 500 new residents, and hundreds of new students. The current zoning is for a two-story office complex. Now to my concerns. The roads in proximity to the lot are already problematic. There are times when you can get stuck wading through multiple lights before getting your chance to cross an intersection. The intersection of Nitsa Road and Business Center Drive is particularly bad. The schools in the area, particularly the local elementary school, are already at maximum capacity. This is doubly concerning given that there is another very high-density apartment complex currently under construction at the other end of Business Center Drive by Susan Valley. There is no, excuse me, there is no need for this type of housing. There are three apartment complexes within two miles of the Safeway Shopping Center, Bridgeport, I can't read it, and Verdant. All three complexes currently have numerous apartment, numerous available units. This is before considering the surplus that will exist once the currently under-construction Green Valley apartments are completed. By the way, the rent at the three existing complexes range in price from $2,200 to well over 300, to well over $3,000 for a one- or two-bedroom apartment. That's pretty much the same as a mortgage on a townhome or a smaller single-family home in the area. She-horning a four-story monolithic apartment complex on a lot at the mouth of our beautiful valley seems obscene. Aesthetics are a part of the consideration for the zoning and city planning of a particular area. I would argue, and I'm sure I'm not alone, that this type of apartment complex in this location is completely out of line with the aesthetics of the area. Most of us moved into this area because we wanted to live in a semi-rural suburban environment. This would significantly change the feel of Green Valley community. Please consider my concerns and stop this rezoning effort. Please read my letter into the record. Eli Hefner, longtime resident of Upper Green Valley. Then, now me, now my comments. And I'll, I'll come from it, from a different point of view. I'm concerned about what appears to be an erosion of compliance with the Brown Act. Sometimes there are no video recordings of the Planning Commission meetings. The ability to participate in the Planning Commission meetings has been very difficult. This was fixed for tonight. Thank you Lucia Morales, she fixed that, but that's been going on for a while. I am concerned that the effort is to counter the community response, not to honestly review and evaluate problems. Staff has stopped communicating, pretending not to receive emails, therefore violating the standard of transparency that is required of the city. City that is spending tax dollars collected from the residents. The city of Fairfield has an RHNA housing allocation of 3,069 housing units, which already has been planned for. The train station-specific plan alone exceeds that number. It has 3,527 units approved. The combination of the approved developments and the housing under construction is 8,260 units. Fairfield does not need to approve housing like this. Proposed apartment complex that will crush the quality of the existing residents. Traffic is a nightmare. For example, the road leading to Rodriguez High School is just two lanes, reaching, requiring a full stop before an exit to I-80 East. Schools are already at capacity. There are no new schools in the pipeline. The general plan does have a icon that indicates one in the Rockville Road area, but I've confirmed that that is not true. At the villages, a parcel is labeled future school. That also is not true. There are no new schools. There is a deception about a new Cordelia smart station. That was mentioned in the previous planning, somebody came and commented on that. It shows up on the general plan, too. That was merely a study completed by the STA. The STA did not even submit that to the Bay, excuse me, Plan Bay Area 2050. Rally McCoy, Regional Planner with ABAG, stated STA did not identify a new straight, excuse me, train station in the Cordelia area as a project to be considered for inclusion in Plan Bay Area 2050. And as such, Plan Bay Area 2050 does not include a new station in that area. I think that's extremely significant because all this high-density building, it's been promoted to go along with mass transit.
Nora, so your three minutes have expired.
Uh, but there were lots of-
Yeah, that you have three minutes.
That's not what we agreed to. Okay, let me make this real, okay. Governor Newsom passed laws to promote ADUs and SFRs for affordable housing, but our city does not, is not pushing that. We need affordable housing. Last, Dave Feinstein did a masterful job planning this train station-specific area. We deserve the same type of honest effort to keep our community growing in an orderly fashion instead of making our lives descend into chaos by packing more housing without proper infrastructure. Please stop. Thank you.
Nora, thank you so much for bringing so many comments to light. Okay, now, do we have Zoom calls? Okay.
Okay, Brian, can you hear me? Can you all hear me out there?
See if this works.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Brian, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay. Uh, the first Zoom comment will be from Monica Silva. Monica, go ahead.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so hi, my name is Monica Silva. I live in the Sienna neighborhoods right behind this proposed complex lot, and I just wanted to voice that I am in agreement with the majority of the comments tonight, that it's not a good idea to put a four-story apartment complex building on that corner for the obvious reasons, the traffic, it's an eyesore. My bedroom and all of my upstairs windows face that whole area, and to see a four-story apartment complex in my view where it should be just the beauty of where I live is just very, very disappointing. We actually just moved here a few months ago from a high-density apartment-style living, and that's all I saw was a four-story building outside of my window, and when we moved here, we were under the impression that this was an area that you could enjoy the scenery, there was space, and that, that building going up would just completely devastate and really just make it unsatisfactory to look out our windows and actually appreciate where we live. Also, not to mention the whole idea of providing affordable housing. Luxury-style apartments do not offer affordable housing options because they are just that, they are luxury. So for them charging $2,500 a month in rent- as like the minimum is the same as what you would get for a mortgage for a condo or a townhome. Let's put the wealth back into the community and not let that be in just the hands of one person, charging all these people rent and making money off of the land like that. It's just irresponsible. The sewage is not gonna be able to ha, you know, uphold all this, the water demand, the schools, just everything. All of these checkboxes are getting checked off, that it's not a good idea. All the cons are outweighing the pros for this project. So please consider that we live in this area because we want to have quality over quantity. And please disapprove this application for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Next up, we have Diana. Diana, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi there, can you guys hear me okay? All right, I appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to call in. I wasn't able to make it because I'm at home with my children. But I did want to voice up, I echo what a lot of the community members have said regarding their concerns, particularly regarding the infrastructure. I know the organization has proposed to start the planning as soon as this gets reviewed by the commission. But my concern is, is that if they start doing their research in the next nine months, the results are gonna be absolutely skewed. We've got students that actually aren't in school right now that are doing homeschool because of COVID. And so any data that they propose regarding the traffic patterns and/or regarding the education proposals and the impact that they're anticipating, there is probably not gonna be as accurate if we were to wait a year or two to review the information. So I just feel like the whole project is rushed. They did mention that they are finishing up with the other apartment complex this, like, maybe summer/fall timeframe, which is about the time that they would be starting on this one. So I get why they're kind of pushing the button, but there's no reason for us to make any rash decisions if we're not gonna have the full amount of data when it comes down to the final vote on the project. So I did wanna say that. And then I do have small children as well. I know there was another community member that said they were worried about their kids, their young children, getting into even the kindergarten. I am too, I've got two myself that are gonna be headed there in a few years. And there's just always this concern whether or not there's even gonna be room. When my older children first came to the neighborhood, we were told that they were gonna have to potentially bus to another Fairfield School just because of capacity. So, and that was a few years ago. So just wanted to voice my concerns about the, the traffic, of course, and the education infrastructure, as well as the research that they plan to do and how it may be inaccurate still because of COVID response. So that is it.
Thank you, Diana.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have one more speaker, but before we do, I'd like to remind anybody who's watching on Zoom, if you'd like to make a public comment at this time, please use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Last up, we have Morticia. You have three minutes? Go ahead, whenever you're ready. Give her one second.
Hi, my name is Morticia Perkins, and I also live in the Sienna community. And I just wanted to voice my concern on just, I, I'm gonna echo what everybody has said. Everybody has spoke so passionately before me. So there's no need to keep going on about the safety and, because those, it's everybody's concern, the safety. And the fact that, again, that area is for commercial use, and I would like for it to stay commercial. Um, I, I, it was one, someone who wrote in, who made a great point of pointing out, maybe develop in the downtown Fairfield area. I, I agree. I think that that area needs to be spoofed up a little bit. The Green Valley area, especially on that corner, does not, please do not put those apartments there. I asked the City Planning Committee, as well as the developers, to reconsider. Do not put those apartments there. We don't need them. We do not need, they're already making, they're already building apartments, literally a half a block down the street. So we, we don't need it. There's no need for me to go on and on. Everybody, like I said before me, hit on great points on the safety of the kids, the, the school system, the traffic. I'm asking that you guys not move forward with this project. Thank you.
Okay, it appears that is the last public speaker for now. Is there anybody else on Zoom? If you wanna speak now, use the Raise Your Hand feature. Okay, that looks like the last one. Thank you.
Would staff like to, first of all, I wanna thank so many of our neighbors and friends for coming out to this meeting and sharing your concerns. They're important to hear. And in my opinion, this is true democracy, little d, at work. And we appreciate that feedback. Would staff like to respond to any of the comments?
Yeah, just a general, overall comment. We heard lots and lots and lots of issues. We'll obviously take down all of those comments and the various issues, so that if this project does move forward, we'll make sure to, to address as many of those as possible. It's a part of the analysis that comes back to you. There was, there was just one item that I caught that I do wanna correct, just so that it's clear. I heard mention of a two-story office building is what's allowed with the existing zoning. To be clear, the existing zoning allows a 50-foot-tall building, which is shorter than what's being asked as a part of this request. So just to be clear, 50-foot would be what would be allowed to be built today. But other than that-
And just for general purpose, 50 equals plus or minus three stories. Correct?
Probably, that's probably about right, yeah.
Okay. We're ready to close the public hearing, correct? Public hearing portion is now closed. We throw it back to the commission for deliberation, comments, observations.
Yeah, just to echo what Chair Matthews said. We appreciate people providing so much input. Going into this meeting, I was, I figured there would be some concerns, and there's, it's been much more lopsided than, than I think probably I would have even imagined. You know, I don't live in, in Green Valley now. I, I used to. I used to live over by Nell de Mundi and, and over by Green Valley Lakes years ago. But, you know, the people have come out and they've spoken. It's been very, very clear. I think, you know, I, I think that, without repeating all of the concerns, you know, I, I just wanna say that, you know, this, the plan that's before us today doesn't, it doesn't fit the cranes, the current zoning, and, and I don't think it fits the, the, the needs of, or the concerns of, of the neighbors, the residents of, of Green Valley. So with that being said, I, I would move to table the resolution and not approve the rezoning.
So just before we entertain the motion, let's gather up additional comments from the commission members, if that's okay? Other thoughts?
I, I would say from my position, what I've heard tonight is that there definitely needs to be some more dialogue before we initiate this.
Thank you.
I have concerns about the affordability of the apartment complex, the density, as well as the location and proximity to transit. I like the idea of creative apartment complex adjacent to retail, shopping, transit, buses, trains. I, I like that idea. I'm just not sure that this project falls into that. There was one additional item that just lost me. I'll have to come back, it just left me. Oh, also that one-way-in, one-way-out, and so close, you know, that proximity to the forthcoming hotel. And I understand that this is not a recommendation for the project, only the recommendation to continue studying it. But I'm similar to Commissioner Smith at this point. Oh, the general plan, because we're in the process of updating the general plan and getting citizens' input on the general plan and what we can do. And that's not too far off. So I, I think I'm leaning towards that side of, of not approving this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions?
And just to clarify, even if we don't approve initiating this study, they can still go before the city council, who can approve it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, like Commissioner Matthews said, this is really great to see, because it has been democracy here. For me, my comments are, I hear what everyone's saying, but I also like the idea of research. I think that before you just say no to things and say "not in my backyard," we have to consider how we got to where we are in California, because we can't keep saying "not in my backyard," and then we all say we don't want homeless people either. The homeless people came about because so many people said "not in my backyard." However, I do believe in building with balance and with vision. And like my constituents said, because of the fact that we're going through the revision of the general plan, I do think that we need to wait what the pub, wait and see what the public's vision is for that, because we want to make sure that this project is good for us in the long term. And we have yet to see what the other developments, what the other development impacts are gonna be like in that area, because they're still under construction. So I think to add something else on top of something else that we have not yet seen the, the fruits of yet, and in the midst of the city plan is, I think we're pulling the trigger too fast on this one for me. But it's, again, for me, it's not because I don't want it in our backyard, because I think that everyone has to do their fair share in Fairfield, because I'm sure that if we wanted to propose high-density on West Texas or Texas Street, they would also say, "What about our crime? What about our traffic?" We're all being impacted in Northern California. This is not the only city, and that's what I want residents to consider. If you go to Dixon, they're going through this. Rio Vista, Davis, we are all going through this economic migration where everyone's looking for someone cheaper, somewhere more rural. So I just would like for you to consider that, and then also consider how we attract businesses. Because I do appreciate the developer coming out and say, "Hey, we wanna work with you," because we don't wanna show ourselves as not a business-friendly place, because we do want retail, we do want businesses, and we do want housing. All of the people who are now enjoying those single-family homes that were built within the last decade in Green Valley, there could have been a lot of people that came out and said, "You know what, we've been in Sisson since the 60s, and we don't want new homes." So, and I mean, I was over there with my nieces and nephews before Cordelia Hills Elementary was at 700 children. And a lot of that came from the newly-built, single-family homes. So I think that we have to consider things in the broader scope before we just yell "not in my backyard." There has to be balance. But like I said, I think because of the fact that we already have projects, and we haven't seen the impact of it yet, I'm leaning towards what my constituents said, and I'm not for it.
Thank you. Any other comments? I wanna just make a couple of quick points. First of all, just with respect to staff's role, because I know there were some concerns that were raised about that. It is common and expected that staff will analyze a project and make their recommendation, and that's what they've done. And from all my interaction with all of Dave's, Mr. Feinstein's staff, they're exceptionally professional and very thorough. And I just wanna express appreciation on behalf of the commission for your work in that regard, and let the public know that in no way are you incentivized by any developer or otherwise. So just to put that on the record. I do also wanna address the fact that there were a lot of comments of, "Hey, we need more retail." And I'm a resident, I live three miles from this area. I also have spent my career in commercial real estate. There's no way retailers would come without residents. And so if we want more retail, we have to have more rooftops. Now, is this the right place? That's a totally different question. But I just wanna go on the record saying, you can't get retail if you don't have housing. And jobs won't bring retail. They might bring certain types of retail, but not the type of retail that's been mentioned. We've had approximately 40 comments against, no one in favor, other than the applicant. So that does send a strong message. One other quick point I wanna make is that we're volunteers. We serve at the pleasure of the mayor. We're not elected officials. City council are elected officials. And anything that we do can, and sometimes is, overridden by city councils. So regardless of what the outcome is of this, the applicant has a right to appeal to the city council. And I would encourage the community, should this continue forward, regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, to recognize the role of the city council in our city governance. So with that, if there's no other comments, I, please.
A lot of, majority of the people are gone, but I just wanted to say, to those that are here, thank you so much. Your comments and concerns have made me really appreciate and really, I'm really proud to be, you know, a citizen of Fairfield. I'm kind of torn, to be honest. I'm a single woman, and there's not a house here that I can afford. There's not an apartment that I feel safe, that I can afford, living on my own. I, you know, do come home late. We need housing, obviously. And the location, it's a little weird, and you guys did open my eyes to a lot of concerns. So I really appreciate it. It's, this decision is really hard for me. And just wanna thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. So Commissioner Smith, I believe you started to make a motion. Do you wanna continue that motion?
Sure, yeah, I would like to, to make a motion to table the resolution, essentially under the idea that, you know, we would continue to gather community input for the general plan, and then have, hopefully have a comprehensive plan for this area so that the community and the Planning Commission and the city council can see all of what's planned. And I think that would be the fairest way to do it, especially when we're proposing something that's beyond, beyond what the area has, has done before. So I will make a motion to table the resolution.
And Chair, if I could just try and clarify what action would be taken with this motion? So the motion would be to not initiate the plan development zoning.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do we have a second at that?
I would second it.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please so signify. I'm actually going to abstain of vote, but there were six, how many do we have? Five against, I mean, five supporting the motion to not initiate the project. Okay. Thank you. Now, are we on Item B?
Is it C?
I've now forgotten which items have been continued from tonight. I think B is one of the continued items.
It looks like we're on Item C.
Item C, yes.
Thank you.
Item C.
Pardon me? Um, what, it's to 2050, is that the plan?
The general plan?
Yeah.
Would be to 2050, yes.
Yes. Oh, uh, that we'll hear more about, but it'll probably take a year or so. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Mr. Miller, you're up.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Barely.
Okay. How about now? Well, okay. How about now? I'll talk loudly. All right. This is a pretty straightforward one. The teardrop parcel, this is the parcel, basically the north end of North Texas Street where it meets Manuel Campus Parkway and Air Base Parkway, and I'm sorry, not Air Base Parkway, and Interstate 80. This parcel was created when the city redid, rebuilt the North Texas Street, I-80, Manuel Campus Interchange. And so there was basically leftover parcels that were no longer public ride, needed for the public right of way. And in effect, they're surplus parcels. During this action, we did not, however, ever assign any zoning to the site. So that is the action we're asking to initiate tonight. Suitable, of course, for highway and regional commercial uses as in the general plan and as in the surrounding uses. So that's what we're recommending we move forward to. An idea, this is the current general plan. The purple is CHR, Regional Highway Commercial Uses. So this proposed zoning, I'm not calling it a rezoning or zone change notice, this zoning would be consistent with that general plan designation. As mentioned, the regional commercial CR implements the general plan. Um, and again, the site is surrounded by properties with similar designations and there is a planned hotel-restaurant project that's proposed for the site. So that will be coming very shortly before this commission. So that will enable that project. And it will allow the city also to have some sales tax revenue, um, transit occupancy tax revenue and as well as getting new development and additional property taxes from development on what was, what is effectively a surplus site. Um, California Environmental Quality Act, of course, for all actions require review. Um, this is a relatively minor change to land use limitations. Again, it's consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with surrounding land uses and it meets the, it meets the overall intent of the city for this area. Um, any specific future development, of course, would be evaluated at this, at that time for any specific environmental impacts for that project. We're recommending you adopt the resolution approving the zone change, which from unzoned to CR or regional commercial. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, do the commissioners have any question of staff?
So the other surrounding areas, those are, just to be clear, those are all considered consistent with the CR designation, correct? So this is just, it's literally just fixing an oversight.
Correct.
Some time ago, correct? This is a cleanup item. Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, um, we're ready to open public hearing. Public hearing now open. I see no comments. No speaker card. Do we have any Zoom messages on Zoom?
Got any Zoom calls?
Thank you. No messages on Zoom. I am now closing the public hearing portion. Deliberation by commissioners, any questions, comments?
Pretty straightforward.
Uh, I'm very supportive of this and, um, I, uh, am aware that city personnel are working on the development that Mr. Miller mentioned and, uh, I think it's, uh, a fabulous use and so, uh, may I entertain a motion?
I make a, a motion that we adopt the resolution, PC 2021-21, approving the zone change from unzoned to CR.
And I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Chair, if I could just clarify again, um, the resolution would be to recommend, uh, approval of the zone change by the city council, whereas...
State that again, Ms. Strong.
Sorry about that. The resolution would recommend approval of the zone change by the city council rather than actually approving the zone change this evening.
We're approving the resolution.
Yes, your action is to approve the resolution, so that was perfectly correct.
Okay.
Um, I would also like to mention that this will be my last planning commission meeting, so...
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
I appreciate the opportunity to, um, to, to serve you all. Um, I'm moving on to the golden pastures, and so to speak, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to do the job and make these presentations before you. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your many efforts, uh, Brian, and thank you. May I have a vote on the motion and second, um, at hand, please? All those in favor, so signify. Vote into unanimous. All right. I think we're now to, uh, D, item D has been continued. We're at the director's report.
Yes, and let me grab my notes here. Um, okay, so several items for your report tonight. Uh, the first one is we've talked a little bit about the general plan and the update to the general plan. We've talked about that, uh, at several meetings we've had in the past, uh, as well as it's come up tonight. Uh, we are in the process of wrapping up what we call the alternatives phase, looking at different alternatives. The, uh, the general plan update team has put out a report on possible alternatives for the general plan. At your very next meeting, we're going to present that to you and get your feedback on those alternatives. Uh, there are three different alternatives that are, that are presented. What we've done is we've given you a copy of the report on the alternative, so that's at your, at your seat tonight. You're going to get a staff report, uh, in a week and a half or so that will walk you through it, um, and you'll probably get another copy of that with that. Um, but we wanted to make sure you got that as early as, as we could, that was just released on Friday. So you have a copy of that. Uh, it's also available on the FairfieldForward.com website if you want to download another copy of that. This Saturday, uh, in advance of the planning commission meeting, so the planning commission meeting will be in two weeks, this Saturday, we're holding a public workshop, uh, at the Fairfield Library, uh, in the, uh, at the Civic Center, uh, just down the street from here, uh, in the meeting room from 10:00 AM to noon. It's an open house, so you don't have to show up right at 10:00, although there'll be a brief presentation at 10:00 that'll be in continuous rotation on the slot, on the screen above. Uh, but it'll be an opportunity for people to learn about the alternatives. We'll have several workstations, people can ask questions. Planning commissioners, if you're interested in dropping by, you're welcome to do so, although like I say, we will be coming back. Um, but anybody who's watching, uh, please do come, uh, to that workshop.
Is it, is it the library?
It's at the library, uh, just here at the Civic Center, uh, on this coming Saturday at 10:00 AM, runs till noon. Um, let's see, so we've talked about the general plan, uh, coming to your next meeting. We continued one of your items from tonight, item D, the master plan for the second phase of the One Lake subdivision. It's been continued to the next meeting. There's an outside chance that we'll do that, although probably not. It'll more likely be at the following meeting, but it is possible we'll be forwarding that one to you, uh, for the next meeting, but again, most likely not. Let's see, Brian, uh, stole my thunder, I was going to announce some staffing changes, starting with Brian. Uh, Brian Miller, who presented to you, he's been with the city for nearly 30 years as a planner. He is an extremely knowledgeable person about what's going on around here. Um, and so he said golden pastures. What he means is he's retiring. And we all feel great for Brian that he's got the opportunity to do that. Uh, you know, I think a lot of us would love to retire. Brian actually gets that chance and he's doing that right now. So we are very grateful for everything he's done for us, uh, the work he's put in over 30 years with the planning commission. Um, so I'll miss him greatly. You know, I've been with the city for 26 years and as I was saying, it's probably one of the longest relationships, you know, continuous, non-stop relationships other than my family that I've had in my life. So this, yeah, this was the last night you'll see Brian, so I was going to announce that if he didn't, but I'll announce it anyways. Uh, Brian is not the only person, uh, who's leaving Anna Noel, uh, who has done with us for the last two years. She actually just left. Uh, she was an associate planner, took a job as a senior planner, uh, closer to her home. She lives over in Santa Rosa, uh, so she's got a, not a promotional position, much closer to her house. And we're always really happy, I'm always not happy when my staff leaves, but I'm always really happy when it's for a promotional position. That says, you know, you get really good opportunities here at the city of Fairfield and you learn a lot of good stuff and you become a better, better staff person, better planner. And so she exemplified that. So, uh, we're, we're a little light. Uh, we've got an active recruitment. If anybody's watching or if anybody knows, uh, people who are interested in planning jobs, we are currently recruiting for either an assistant or an associate planner position. We've got two positions available, uh, and that recruitment's available on the city's website, uh, on the jobs page, and that'll be open through November 1st to apply. So at the moment, we're a little light staff-wise, but, uh, very soon we'll have some fresh faces around here. Uh, the last thing I want to mention, and it, uh, same topic of fresh faces, as you know, we're, this is a seven-member body. Commissioner Wood had to resign when he moved out of town. Uh, this coming Tuesday, the city council will be appointing, uh, the new member for, uh, for our missing seat. Uh, the name hasn't been made public yet, so I'm not able to, to share the name. But, uh, that person will fill the uncompleted term that Commissioner Wood had, which runs through June. So at a minimum, they'll be here through June, uh, whether or not, uh, they seek reappointment, I, I don't know. But, uh, so what I would say is almost certainly at your next meeting, we'll have, uh, our newest commissioner to join the group. With that, uh, that'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Feinstein. Um, any comments from the commissioners? Um, I do want to make one comment that next meeting, uh, I'm going to be traveling, uh, to the southern part of the state, so I won't be here. So, uh, Commissioner Child, I'm sure Dave will be...
Of course.
Uh, Mr. Feinstein will be in touch with you on that. With that, we'll adjourn to, um, October 27th. Meeting adjourned.